Just turned six thirty, we'll call this trial balance review in session and I will bring us out at seven o'clock to go into our regular meeting. So, on that, Mel.
Well, I'm not sure exactly where we ended up, so I'm gonna start by, I'm gonna start at tree planting, if that's okay.
What number is that one?
That was, it's about halfway down, right? Basically, that is a fund that has not had any activity in probably, I wanna say a decade, I don't know that for certain, but anyway, it, we used to allocate money annually into some tree planting fund and then periodically do some planting, and anyway, this has sat idle. I will tell you that what I have tried to do with this fund, with, working with the Virgens partnership, is to use this money as some matching grants, 'cause the state does have some programs where you can get some small grants and typically they're fifty percent matching, so, anyway, that's, that's what that fund is about.
Tree planting, right?
Right, and to me, you know, if we're not gonna get a grant, we oughta just go plant some trees and get rid of the fund.
I was gonna say, you see putting more money in it, or what's the...
I haven't put any money in it for, I haven't put any money in it, I, I...
I didn't either, and I had the same idea about going for the grants, those tree planting grants, and they, I think they are fifty percent.
Yeah.
But never got there.
Yeah, so, you know, maybe, Bill, I can tell you when this has come up, and actually, some of these downtown, these grants are downtown related, and I don't know that it's just trees, it could be, it could be other landscaping type improvements, so, I think this is something that if the partnership wanted to grab a hold of it, if they had...
Use it to match for something.
Yeah, use it, I've offered that before, and then, you know, the deadline hits and it doesn't happen, but I think, you know, with Tara on, you know, on staff, maybe that's something that the partnership might see as a priority.
They can still be made aware of it.
Although, I would say that we shouldn't necessarily go completely away from the idea of tree planting, because a lot of trees have come down, have been taken down, and at some point, we need to start replacing those, 'cause trees have a lot of value, particularly in a compressed, you know, population area.
Yeah, one of the things, shortly, I'm sure Rennie saw it, it was back in ninety-seven or nineteen ninety-eight, the city applied for and received funding for an inventory, if you will. We hired, and I believe, and I believe that was a hundred percent grant, we hired landworks and that, that inventory is still up in my office, and actually, I use that, sometimes people wanna plant a tree out in front of their, their place, between the sidewalk and the curb, and lots of times, I'll go to that inventory, because David may have some suggestions in there, so, we have, the, the planning and the inventory is all done, it's really about, about implementation.
So, I'm getting kinda two messages here, I'm kinda bringing up both thoughts, I guess, is, number one, is, we, we don't wanna plant something underneath the power lines, and it has, this still has to be in the right of way, so that's kinda one thought, and the other one is, should we put the word out to the community that if they would like to see a tree on their lawn, as long as it's within the right of way, if they bring it to our attention, we might be able to assist them in getting it there? Would that be reasonable?
Any, you're absolutely right, Mike, as far as the money, it needs to be for planting either within the city right of way, or in one of our parks, or in any of our parks, has to be on, should be on, on public property, so...
I mean, if there's, if they're gonna be, we're taking down trees in one place, but you never know if you wanna plant some trees, like, on the other side of, you know, by Falls Park there. There's plenty, there's plenty of trees there, it looks like, though, so...
I'm just thinking, you know, if it's, if it's underneath power lines, we wanna have some sort of a fruit tree that doesn't grow very tall, but doesn't block, line aside, and far enough back, that sort of thing.
Yeah, I think, you know, I can tell you what I'd be, what I, I know I could find it, I'm happy to loan out this, this three-ring binder, it doesn't come on a CD, this was a nineteen ninety-eight study, and get it, get it out there, have people take a look at it, and to me, we oughta, we oughta have a plan, and then follow the plan.
Well, if there's interest, great, you know, we can talk to the partnership, if there's money out there, but I, let's kinda look at it next budget season and figure out what to do with it, get rid of it, mix it with something else, or...
The Steve Correster will come in for nothing, and work with communities to, to see where, you know, what is the appropriate tree for the particular place, you know, some trees are very resilient to salt, so if you're gonna put them next to the road, they'll, they'll still be able to live, and so they're, they're pretty helpful, and I think, there may be a book in the office there someplace.
Yeah, that's right, there's a...
Not the inventory, a, a book, that is, an urban tree book, that has, it, it tells you about the trees, and which ones are resilient to salt, which ones are, needs more sunshine, which need more water, I thought I had gotten a book like that.
Yeah, it's probably there.
It might be in there.
Probably there.
So, it would be an absolute conflict of interest if I mentioned that the maple tree in front of my house, that's on the city's right of way, is dying and needs to be replaced.
That would not be a conflict of interest, I don't think, unless, is your house for sale? Is there some financial gain that you would...
No, actually, probably not.
All right, so, I would say, probably not.
So, does that come under the tree planting reserve?
It certainly could, certainly could. Okay, trees, on to reappraisal reserve. The reappraisal reserve, the revenue stream from that comes from the state of Vermont, I think the number is like, seven dollars and fifty cents per parcel, don't hold me to that.
I thought it was nine, but whatever.
It's, well, we have, we have nine hundred and thirty-two properties, and that's our check, nine, seven thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents, so whatever that math equals, it's probably somewhere between my number and your number, Bill. I can tell you that, because we went through reappraisal at, at, I'm gonna say, the absolute peak of the market, April one, two thousand and seven, we will, other than, you know, our reappraisals were nineteen seventy-four, nineteen eighty-four, nineteen ninety-three, and two thousand and seven, so there was fourteen years in between the ninety-three and the two thousand and seven, so we got about as much mileage as you could possibly ever get out of a reappraisal, and holding, holding the equity, if you will, having, making sure properties are equitably assessed. So, anyway, I don't, I can tell you, in the case of Virgens, I, I don't think we need to augment that fund, I think that that eight thousand dollars a year, by the time we need to do reappraisal, will probably cost about a hundred grand, and that's probably, you know, six, seven years away, for sure, and we'll have, we'll have the hundred...
We've been five years.
Been five, yeah.
I've been twelve years, and we found out that we waited too long, at fourteen, so I would hope we would do it.
It all depends on the market, it depends on the, you know, the COD of the town, and how, how equal the assessments are across different categories. Have you noticed, I mean, I've done some appraisals here, and I've seen some sales that are under assessment, have you, are you anticipating any appeals from people that may think that they're over-assessed?
We get some, Bill, as a matter of fact, the, obviously, there's not a heck of a lot of construction, and so, the activity of the listers is not because of their new house, or their garage, or, or the addition that they built, there's just not a lot of activity, so, the, the grievances, I'll say fifty percent, I'm exaggerating just a little bit, but, but since two thousand and seven, because it was the absolute peak, you know, anybody that had some equity in their, in their home, and went through, through refinancing, you know, bought the three hundred to three hundred and fifty dollar appraisal, and looked at it and thought, huh, my appraisal came in at two nineteen, and the city has me assessed for two forty, something's wrong here, and so, there have been a handful of people that have brought their professional appraisals to the, to the lister's degree, now...
Well, I wouldn't trust any appraisers.
I know, I know, well, we, we take it into account.
They're rotten people.
It is an exact science, however, it is an exact science. Anyway, and one of the things that the listers have to do, and they aren't able to convince everybody, but there was a time when everybody's assessment, on average, was about five percent high, maybe five to ten, and so...
So, the equity was there.
Yeah, so when they come in and complain that their appraisal is ten percent lower than our assessment, we say, that's good, that's right on, but they don't, they don't quite get it, so, there's not a lot of those, Bill, but there's, you know, there's, there's a handful, so...
So, you're trying to make those pretty perfect, then?
I'm gonna tell you, and I, and I hear Mike, you know, saying that the, that the fourteen years was too long, and, and I can tell you, from a, from a value standpoint, and whatever, you know, he's right, it was too long, however, not visiting somebody's property for fourteen years isn't fair.
Right.
Okay, as, as you know, Bill, I mean, people make improvements to the, you know, we don't require permits when they're, you know, refinishing their basements, or do something, so we, so there's lots of improvements that occur out there, that don't trigger a zoning permit, and therefore, don't trigger a visit by the listers, and so, fourteen years, it is, it is a long time, you know, but, but if you can get ten, eleven, twelve years out of an appraisal, you know, and the, and if the, if it's still equitable, then, I think we're fine, so, so anyway, as I, as I said at the outset, I think that there was a time when the amount of money that the state was giving was not intending to pay for one hundred percent of a, of an appraisal, but to put a major dent in, in the cost. I think in the case of Virgens, when we did our appraisal in two thousand and seven, we actually had to use a little bit of two thousand and eight's money, I think we actually went in the hole by three, four thousand dollars, something like that, Rennie would know better than me, I think we got in the hole, a little bit, went in the hole, obviously, as soon as the check came in, dug ourselves out of the hole, and, and that fund has accumulated to thirty, whatever that says, thirty, thirty-one thousand dollars, and...
And we're no worse off now than we were in two thousand and seven, so I think we're...
So, I think we're, to me, there's nothing...
I wouldn't need to fund it at this point.
I don't think so, there, I don't think there's anything to worry about there. West Main Street, Rennie would know more about this, but it's my understanding, when the city, in essence, converted a class one paving project to totally rebuild West Main Street, if you remember back in, it might've been before your turn, it was two thousand and one.
It was before me, but I know something about it.
Well, there was an agreement between the, between the state of Vermont, Be Trans, and the city, I've never read the agreement, so, but I think I have an understanding of it, is that the city was required to set money aside for, you know, to, to do a resurfacing at some point, in essence, saying, don't you, you know, we're going, we're going to change the scope of a normal class one repaving project to a rebuild of a, of a considerable section of Main Street, which is not typically done under that program, it's not done under that program, so, as I understand it, there was an agreement made between the city and the state, that, that, that they would totally reconstruct that road, and, but don't look to the state the next time you need to do a class one resurfacing.
Because we handled rebuilding the road, basically, ourselves.
Right, right.
And so, with the state being out of it, mostly out of it, they required certain things, like this reserve fund for maintenance purposes, that sort of thing.
So, this is to repave it at some point in the future, or new repairs?
Absolutely, it's dedicated to that section of road, I think it's from the bridge, the bridge to Pant Road, or something like that, there's a, I'd have to, like I say, I've never read the agreement, but I...
And I haven't either, and I'm just wondering, or maybe I have and I don't remember, but, but, the, I'd look into it to see whether there's a certain number of years that we have to maintain that reserve.
Fifteen years.
Because I think when we get to those years, I think we oughta use the money someplace else, you know?
Yeah, because they let the city do the whole project, didn't have to wait for the state to come in and do it.
Right.
They let us do it, but we have to create a maintenance fund.
But it's with our money, this fund is not leftover money, I think this is our money.
No, all that money came from Mile Jade, we put all the Mile Jade money for the class, that portion of the class one highway...
Okay.
Into that fund, every year, every year.
Okay.
And that's how it built up.
Okay, okay.
'Cause we were responsible for any maintenance for fifteen years, and that was done during Randy Friday's time.
I would just like to see us, at some point, consider putting a top coat on before it gets too bad, like Main Street's getting, you know, we need to stay ahead of that curve, and top coating might carry a little bit.
It'll buy us more time.
Yep.
And it goes from the bridge up just before the bourgeois house.
Pant Road, or just a little...
Just beyond the intersection.
Okay, Pump House Restoration, let me, I'll give you just a little history about how this fund got started, it actually goes way back to when Green Mountain Power went through their relicensing, forcary licensing, back, way back, whenever it could've been, yes, I think it was, you know, nineteen seventy-eight, or something like that, and there was, we settled up with Green Mountain Power on their lease, leased water, and there was some additional dollars that they gave, and that went into that fund, and that fund was used to do roof repairs and structural work inside a building, and that's really about it. If you're wondering what this expense is, in this last year, it actually dealt with the flood, and where all of the elect, the, all of the electrical conduits that were fastened to the pedestrian bridge were ripped off from that, and had to be, the whole electricity thing had to be totally redone, I don't know that that represents all fifty, five hundred dollars of it, but I can tell you, it represents a major chunk of it, I know I had John Leach do a little window, window painting repair, and things like that, but, but the lion's share of it was, was getting electrical back.
So, there's no insurance coverage on something like that, with a flood?
Yeah, I would say not.
Because it's, you don't have flood insurance.
Yeah, oh yeah, we don't have flood insurance for it.
Just giving everybody a warning here, it's fourteen minutes up, so either we gotta crank up the speed a little bit, or...
Cranking. Okay, Fishing Derby Reserve, that's obviously a recreation event that has its own account, raises its own money, used for that purposes, and, you know, basically, Michelle, over the years, she has an accounting system that's as good as ours, she could tell you that her number, say, seven seventy-five eleven, as well, so, obviously, it, if you wonder, if you're looking at this, you see like, low years, big years, it's because we did not have an event in two thousand and eleven, and so, we didn't have to raise, we didn't, they didn't raise much money in two thousand and twelve, because they had the leftover money from two thousand and eleven, but typically, they raise about eight thousand dollars and spend about eight thousand dollars, and the city does allocate five hundred dollars from the recreation program funding, if it's needed, and, you know, I, and I frankly can't remember the last time they were not successful in their, in their fundraising efforts to put on that event. Restoration fees, clerk, what that is, statutorily, one dollar of every ten dollars that's paid as land recording fees, goes, is, by law, goes into a restoration fee, so this is about restoring books that are in our, in our vault, so you can see the revenues, two thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars, obviously, there was, Melissa received two thousand two hundred and eighty-two pages, pieces of paper, that needed to be recorded, and a dollar was pulled out of that and put into a fund. Joan, Joan, just period, there wasn't any expenses during this last period, but Joan has done a number of books, I, I'm gonna, I can't speak for her, 'cause she keeps closer tabs on them than me, but I'm sure she's not done, but, you know, it's something that Joan's been doing, you know, do two or three books, do two or three books, but there is a pretty good chunk of money there, Joan, so that, obviously, money, money's not...
But they're pretty expensive.
Yeah, it's, it's...
Well, it can be five thousand dollars a book, 'cause they have to deacidify them, and then treat them, and then rebind them in a book, and, you know, with a whole new leather covering, and the big old books, but, the history's invaluable, so, I do a couple of books every now and then, just...
So, we could, you know, so Joan, it's, I can tell you that, from a policy standpoint, in the past, Joan just deals with it, you know, the money comes in, she, she goes in the vault, she says, well, we'll do land record book two, three, and four, or whatever, you can kinda tell which ones are getting, getting beat up.
All my Bible records are about covers, indexes.
So, that's that one. Lister Education Fund, similar program to the reappraisal, however, not, not nearly the money, the three hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-three cents is a check from the tax department, it's a math problem, I think it's thirty-five cents a parcel, what's the number, Bill, I don't know, something like that, whatever, thirty cents, anyway, I can, and you can see that this fund just accumulates, you know, if somebody on our board of listers, you know, attended some training session, if you will, their mileage and the thirty-dollar fee to attend that would come out of this fund. I don't really see any immediate need to, to augment it, nor, nor use it, however, you know, let, let's say, if, if the listers decided to do, be more hands-on, like right now, and we hired APIS to do our reappraisal in two thousand and seven, we continue to hire APIS to do our annual maintenance, APIS is actually now connected to the tax department, Ed, Ed's, that, I don't wanna say that firm has dissolved, but anyway, if we were to want to use Ed Clodfelder's company, of course, Chris Rockwood passed away, a little less than a year ago, he was the key person assigned to, to Virgens, but the tax department can, is now able, if you will, to provide that, that service, so, I just see, we can't use the fund for anything other than Lister Education, it'll, it'll...
It doesn't really do much, the way Virgens operates.
Right, right.
You know, if you've got a lister that's, I mean, you could take an I double A O course, that's gonna cost you a thousand dollars, for someone who's an active lister, that wants to, you know, really get a degree in assessing, it's not gonna happen at Virgens, the way we operate, so, it's gonna accumulate, and I don't see spending much of anything out of there, I'm not sure what the future of that is, but...
Yeah, I mean, it's real, we'd have to search for something, Bill, like, for instance, you know, if, if we wanted to be a little more knowledgeable in KAMA, you know, to not have to bring, bring them in, a little bit more knowledgeable in the sketch recreation...
But you need someone that's gonna be here for ten years, and wants to learn it.
Right.
I mean, you've been doing it kinda part-time, Chris did it, but, yeah.
Right, so anyway, just somebody sitting there, very dedicated. Virgens Day Fund, I'm gonna say similar, similar to the Fishing Derby, it's a dedicated event fund, if you will, has its own sources of revenue, which, which I can tell you, for the past few years, are very much run related, or the footrace related, the revenue stream that comes into that funds much of the expenses associated with that event, so, it's a, it's a dedicated fund for that purpose, the city budget's two thousand dollars a year, for the Virgens Day, towards that Virgens Day event. Records Computerization, this is, I'll have Joan talk about this, I can tell you, it works similar to the, to the restoration funds, where that's a dollar a page, this is not a state mandated funding formula, but for every, out of every ten dollars that comes in for land recording, there's three dollars that goes into this records computerization fund, and Joan can maybe take it from there.
Yeah, that's a fund, you hear other clerks, other towns talking about, they're digitalizing their records, and having them available online, and doing backups of them, we have done nothing at this point, we're just putting the money aside.
Except for maps.
Yeah, we did do our maps, we did, that, that cost just under, I think it was just under four thousand dollars. I love them, fourth mill, always feels like I can be fine-tuned a little better, but I know our researchers love them, we tell them, just give us a book and page, we'll print it for you, and we do, and they love it, and, but as for putting, digitalizing all our records, and having them online, like Middlebury has their indexes online, different communities that have switched over, and they've all gone with different vendors for doing that, so, there's not a consistency there, and the Clerks Association hasn't made a recommendation to go with one vendor or another, so we're all kinda just out there, not knowing, but when we do take the step, my concern is, when I do take a step, I want whoever I go with, for the process to be converted into whatever the state may mandate in the future, so, and I ask various researchers who come in my office, how do they like it, when they get to towns that do have them online, or have them on computers in the office, and they have mixed feelings about them, because every system is different, and it's all about the indexing, how one clerk will index compared to another, so, that's what these funds have been put aside for, I really thought the step would've been taken by now, but, no one is real firm in, this is the way to go, and all the clerks are jumping on, so, so I'm just letting my money just sit and stockpile until something's more concrete and uniform amongst the clerks.
I think that's a great idea, I, I totally, 'cause I work in towns, and I know, and they're always saying, you know, who does, who's using what, where, and it tells it as uniform, I would just sit and let it pile up to it.
Yeah, because it's not a handicap to go the other way, you know, they, they say, you know, whatever you offer, that's what we're gonna do, so, I'm just waiting at this point.
Okay, the next one is, I'm gonna try real hard, Mike, Recreation Maintenance Reserve Fund, obviously, this is tied into the Watershed Fund, in March, the voters approved a reset of the reserve fund from three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the column that says revenue, you see this forty-four thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and thirteen cents, that is because, on June thirtieth, the Watershed Fund had three hundred ninety-four thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and thirteen cents, and we, in essence, it hasn't been pulled out of there yet, but from a bookkeeping standpoint, it's been pulled out, forty-four thousand seven hundred and ten has been pulled out of there, leaving the Watershed Fund, on the first of July, reset at this new number of, of three fifty. Going forward, unless the policy changes, is to use, is that seventy-five percent of the earnings on that three fifty will be transferred over into this Recreation Maintenance Reserve Fund, which at this point, I don't wanna say the Recreation Committee owns the money, but this is the money that the Recreation, the Recreation Committee, from a facilities standpoint, kind of watches over, develops recommendations as to what, where that money should be spent. I can tell you, the, even though that looked rich there for a minute, ending the year with forty-nine thousand dollars, we've spent forty of it already, we spent about thirty-six thousand of it on the basketball court skating rink area, there's about nine thousand dollars left. The Virgens Burying Ground, that's the check, you know, obviously, that, that's an item that I think the city council, at some point, needs to discuss, how is that fund gonna be run, how's the cemetery gonna be run, how's decisions gonna be made about that twenty-seven thousand dollars? The, the Down Under Water Tower Loans, those are just part of our assets, when the Streetscape Project in front of Shear Cuts and Deer Trail Partners, which is Linda's and Addison Outfitters, now Linda's, men's at Linda's, they were to pay fifth, twenty-five percent of the budgeted amount of that project, Shear Cuts already paid theirs off, when we, in essence, loaned them a new fifty thousand dollars, Deer Trail, they've made one payment, their second payment will be coming to us in December, and this money was paid out of the Water Tower Fund, and therefore, will be paid back into the Water Tower Fund. The Donnelly Fund is, if you remember, when Carleen Devine was here, where she requested some money to help an elderly gentleman with prescriptions, that had, that came to us under a will, right now, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what authority Joan has or not, but that's, that, that Donnelly Fund, obviously, has to have some kind of a policy relative to, the principal can't be spent, only the interest can be spent, and there has to be some kind of policy to make sure that any expenditures follow the will. The Ray Davison Fund, that started out, that came from Ray's estate, hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars, there's a policy in place, which includes the creation of a committee, that committee is supposed to meet every May, they didn't meet this May, they, they do need to meet, and typically, when that committee meets, they either think about purchasing something, or just simply roll the money over to another year, and so that, that committee needs to be, needs to be gathered up.
Two-minute warning.
Yep, Watershed, Watershed Principal, I basically have already covered that in my earlier discussion about the Recreation Maintenance Reserve Fund, so I think, Mike, one of the, there's kinda two purposes, I think, my original purpose was to, was to get the city council to kinda better understand these twenty-eight or thirty-two funds, whatever it is, and kinda where the money comes from, and how it works. Bill brought up a point of saying, well, if some of these funds may need a council policy, or if there is a council policy, maybe that policy needs to be reviewed, and so I think the, the other desire of going through this would be for the city council, now that the city council has a little better understanding... council has a little better understanding about how the city acquired these funds, what they've been used for, what their intended purpose is, then the city council should, in essence, develop a list and say, you know, I think there should be a better policy for this one, maybe there needs to be some subcommittee to develop that policy, just like, because like I say, the Watershed Fund, the Ray Davison Fund have very formal policies, obviously the revolving loan fund has a very formal policy, so some of them are very formal, other ones have no guiding policy whatsoever.
Peter, my quick thought, and you're probably already going there, is that do we put this on the next meeting agenda and just do exactly what you just said? Look at the policies that are out there, get us copies of those, and then make some decisions about what needs policies and how we operate.
And most of these seem to be pretty straightforward.
Yeah, right.
First blush, there are three that I would pick out, Water Tower Reserve, Burying Ground, and Donnelly might need to have some kind of a policy that we might want to work on over the winter, but the rest of them, they're all pretty well defined.
Straightforward, yeah.
But I think that's a good idea, let's spend 15 minutes, talk about them, and decide how to proceed.
Make a note, Bill, agenda item.
Got it.
He's going to ask me, you know, what are we supposed to put on the agenda? I knew I was supposed to write something. Make that note right now. Okay, let's see how we're doing. Well, we're one minute past, according to...
David Raphael should be here.
Yeah, but we're going to do the pledge, I'm going to bring that, bring the trial ballots review to closure, and I'm going to call the city council meeting to order and ask everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greetings and thank you to everyone for coming out on such a beautiful evening. I understand we set the clocks back, and we're going to have some more summer, so enjoy the rest of the week. No, that's set the clocks back. It's going to fall back, but that's not for a week or so. Okay, our next person that we're supposed to, the hearing, is David Raphael, the Chair of the Pantin Planning Commission. He is not here, so we're going to move right on to our next item on the agenda, and I'm actually going to ask, and one person is going to be a little surprised, but that's okay. I'm going to actually ask Mel and Jim to do the presentation of this plaque, and I'm going to read the letter this time, okay? So, and Randy, you're going to be camera operator, all you have to do is push that button, aim it, so if you can go around, see? Everybody's got a job.
Yeah.
Okay. October 10th, 2012, Michael Danles, Mayor of City of Virgens. Dear Mr. Danles, enclosed is a certificate recognizing Chris Bear, Virgens Highway Department employee, as a Vermont Road Scholar Level 2. Chris completed the requirement hours of training in the following categories: technical, 42 hours, safety, 12 hours equipment, 30 hours environmental, 6 hours and supervisory, 6 hours. Workshop has provided broad-based education opportunities that are certain to make him a more valuable member of your team of professionals. The staff of the local, of Vermont Local Road is pleased to offer workshops as one way to transfer technology in the ever-changing transportation environment. It would be suitable gesture to present Chris's certificate at a city council meeting or public forum. Virgens should also be congratulated for making it possible for him to attend the workshop. It becomes increasingly important for everyone to take advantage of these training opportunities. It has been our pleasure to get to know Chris over the last years, and we look forward to seeing him in the future workshops as he works towards reaching Level 3. Thank you for recognizing Chris, this is a milestone. Sincerely, David F. Anton Director.
For the folks in the room and folks that are watching this on V-Cam, this is not a rerun. People don't have deja vu, yes, Chris Bear is back again. You know, this is a program, you know, I can tell you, you know, 25 years ago, there was no such thing as this, you know, and people who worked in road crews, they just, they learned it by getting behind the wheel, or, you know, or sometimes they learned it the hard way by, or maybe not following the regulation or whatever. This program really educates the folks out there that work in public works department, highway departments. I can tell you, I know, you know, Jim has been public works supervisor since last May, and I can tell you, it's real apparent that he's been to some workshops and seminars and taken some courses. I mean, it really gives you a tremendous edge over folks that haven't done that, so it really means a lot. You know, Chris Bear, you know, Chris, it seems like just yesterday, Jim, when we promoted you and had an opening in the Public Works Department, and we didn't get a lot of applicants, but there was a reason why we didn't get a lot of applicants, because we had some tough standards, in that you had to have a CDL, and we actually wanted somebody that had some experience, and so we only had about five or six candidates, but I'll tell you, we could have started a road crew with this, with the five or six candidates that we had. It was really an impressive group, but I really wanted to steal somebody from the Middlebury Public Works. I did that, and I can tell you, I bring it up any comment, every chance I get. So, anyway, Vermont Local Roads Program, St. Michael's College, Colchester, Vermont, certifies that Chris Bear has successfully completed 42 hours of technical instruction, 12 hours of safety instruction, 30 hours of equipment instruction, 6 hours of environmental instruction, 6 hours of supervisory instruction, and is therefore recognized as a Vermont Road Scholar Level 2.
Congratulations, Chris.
That's something else we forgot, Joan, we forgot the muffler.
Oh, yeah, we did, everyone comments on it, though.
Everybody on TV is saying, "Muffler, what muffler?" Stop by City Hall, you'll see a muffler with the flowers coming out.
Mel, I've worked so hard to try to take and patch things between the surrounding town, and you're stirring it up. Trying to get after Middlebury. Thanks, everybody, congratulations, Chris.
Congratulations, Chris.
Looking forward to the next visitor. There will be more.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, good night.
Good night, Jim. Okay, our next visitor has arrived, and we're going to put him right on. Would you like a minute, or?
No, I'm fine, I'm fine.
You're on.
Thank you. Sure, so the reason I'm here tonight is about a year and a half ago, or a year ago, the Pantin Board of Selectmen decided they wanted to participate in the byway program, and felt like there was a Lake Champlain byway, you know, going through the valley, and we weren't part of it, and felt like, you know, Lake Champlain byway, we should, we're on Lake Champlain, and, you know, the town, you know, we're doing what little we can do to, you know, promote visitorship, we have a few small, you know, businesses, a new Bed and Breakfast, and actually, the board is now, in fact, tonight, there was a meeting about restoring the town hall. You may have seen that the cupola of the town hall has been taken off, if you've been driven by recently, and so, thinking that maybe in the long run, that could be a little visitor center with public restrooms, so forth and so on, and being part of the byway has been a part of our town plan for over two years now, two or three years, and we've recently adopted a new town plan. So, the long and the short of it, as the Chair of the Planning Commission, I was designated to pursue this avenue, and it's turned out to be, you know, a longer process, but one that has been interesting and positive. So, about a year ago, well, about three-quarters of a year ago, February, finally got a meeting before the Vermont Byway Council, which is the, I'm sure you know, the sort of the governing body for byways throughout the state, and presented Pantin's case to the council, and they were very positive, and felt as though Pantin rightfully did have a place potentially as part of the, one of the byway communities, but there was an issue with regard to how, and what route to designate, and how that would work for Pantin and the surrounding communities, and, you know, the bigger stumbling block, and I certainly could, this is my copy of the letter, but I could certainly get you another one, I can share this with the council here, if you want to. And the gist of it was, go back to, you know, to the valley, and see if you can't engage, first of all, Addison in the process, because in order for us to have a continuous loop, obviously from the byway portion designated in Virgens, not only would we need your consent and approval, but it would not make sense to come to you until such time as we had Addison's approval. And while I was discouraged by our eminent Regional Planning Commission Director, I, in my own way, persevered and finally met, a couple of months ago, with the Planning Commission in Addison, because I felt they were the appropriate first step, and they were very positive and supportive, and voted to support the byway, and of course, the next step was to get the approval of the so-called, you know, legislative body, the governing body in their town, which was obviously the Select Board, and two, three weeks ago, I believe, I met with them and walked them through the routes that we're talking about and the loop that we would like to create, and they were positive and supportive, and I have a letter here from them, which I received about a couple of days ago, actually, and they said, "You discussed with the Select Board a possible route through Pantin and Addison, and confirmed that your meeting with the Addison Planning Commission was in the affirmative, the Select Board moved to support this plan." So, in a sense, I guess this constitutes, you know, official Select Board support and town support for the byway. So, now I come to you as the leaders of Virgens, because in order for this to work, we will need your consent to continue the byway along 22A to where it meets Pantin, as well as along Pantin Road to where it meets Pantin, because what the Byway Council really wants us to do is, I can bring this up a little closer to you, they want us to...
Why don't you go over on that side?
You go by Andy, she can capture it, and then we can...
So, what the Byway Council have recommended, and what they're very excited about, is the notion of, obviously, the designation is on Route 7 here, and I guess it does, according to this map, does continue out 22A through the city, to the city boundary. So, our proposal, and I guess, let me back up and say, they were really more interested in having a loop type of a route, rather than kind of a dead end, although, since I met with them, the Lakes to Locks Passage byway has, I guess, literally come to the Champlain Bridge. So, now New York has a byway which comes right to the other side of the bridge, and so the route we're proposing is to take off the short distance on Pantin Road and Virgens, along Pantin Road to Jersey Street at Pantin Four Corners, south on Jersey Street, and then the right turn, basically the main route, on Pease Road, and then along Lake Street through Addison to where it joins Route 17 at Wags, we continue to the point where it intersects the bridge and the New York byway, and then back along Route 17 and 22A back to Virgens, to create that route. And, you know, essentially, be very honest with you and clear, that we do not plan or expect, you know, any improvements or strong, you know, major initiatives associated with this designation. I think both Select Boards and the Planning Commission in Addison were more interested in, over time, managing the bicycle vehicle traffic in a safer and more effective manner, particularly along Lake Street and Pease Road, because you probably know that's also part of the Lake Champlain Bike Way. And I know that in our town, we've long had concerns about the lack of shoulders and conflicts, and so a very modest thought we have is, we might simply improve signage along that route, and maybe be a bit more vigilant about some of the options we might be able to take with the bicycle touring groups to encourage, you know, safer bicycling. If you've been out in that neck of the woods, you'll know, often in the summer, there'll be bicyclists riding three or four abreast in farm machinery, coming back and forth, and it's been, we've been aware of that issue in Pantin for a long time. So, that would be the only thing we really want to be looking at in concert with the byway designation, is actually trying to address bicycle and traffic safety, you know, particularly along this route, in concert, again, with the Bike Way. So, after a long-winded wait, obviously, I'm here tonight because the last step in this process for us is us being town of Pantin as sort of initiators of this, is to come to you as the city council, and to request your support and approval for so designating this route, and I guess, in terms of that short stretch along Pantin Road, as being then officially a part of the byway. Now, with your approval, I still have to go back to the Byway Council and probably update the corridor management plan to some extent, to just include this section in it, and I am planning to attend, I believe there's a Lake Champlain byway meeting in another week that I'm probably going to attend, and discuss that next step with them at that time. So, that's essentially the long and short of it. Again, you can see, this pink line is sort of the designated route on the byway right now to Virgens. You probably are aware that it is not designated in Waltham or New Haven, picks up again in Middlebury, I understand. I didn't realize, but I guess Frearsburg is now part of the byway, so it does, from Virgens north, I think, go all the way through the islands now, so... So, that's the long and the short of it.
Before I ask for a motion, I'd ask, does anyone have any questions of David? Ziggy?
If this becomes designated as the byway, is there any control that this outfit would have over the roads, or the towns would still have?
This has no legal or regulatory purview over the town at all. The byway is actually meant very intentionally to be a non-regulatory program, and that's why it's really based on whether communities want to support it, not on the state saying, "This should be a byway, and we're going to make a byway," and it's very clear, actually, the byway isn't even, if the byway is designated, it's not even to be used, even though inevitably it probably would be, in any kind of a regulatory review process, as a citation, you know, that this is a byway. And I, there's only been one incidence that I, two incidents now in the state, frankly, where the mention of the byway has come into an Act 250 proceeding, and that's with regard to a gravel pit, in both in Moretown and now in, down in Plymouth, that are on sections of byways, and so it was mentioned that the route that the gravel pits were proposed on is part of a byway, but again, the District Commission, nor any agency of the state, cannot use the byway designation in the regulatory process.
Is there any financial support that is being asked from the city on any of that?
Not at this time, no, as I said, we don't, I think the only, I'm going to ask, actually, the byway committee for Lake Champlain, if, you know, in the future, we could have a couple of signs, designating, you know, identifying it as a byway route, and that would be the only request we would make. I'm not aware of any financial requirement, I don't know, I think the Regional Planning Commission basically administers whatever there is to be administered with regard to...
Let me tell you, I'm going to plead naivety here about byway...
Let me tell you, I'm going to plead naivety here about byways. All that I know about byways in Vergennes is that we got a byways grant that involves some interpretive signage, you know, throughout, in our basin area. That's all I know. So I know that it, by having a designated byway in your town, it does make you eligible for some certain finances. It's kind of like downtown designation. You can't get downtown money unless you're in a designated downtown. Rennie might be able to shed a little more light on it, because I haven't seen any other money come through the door.
Well, I can answer a lot of questions, but I was on the Lake Champlain's byway council, so I'm very familiar with byways. And at that time, we were trying to encourage communities to join so that there wouldn't be gaps in it, with still a gap to get to Middlebury. And it's really more of an advantage to communities, because as Mel was saying, it gives you an eligibility for some funds, not that there's a lot of funds available necessarily, but when there are, you can get funding because you are a byway. And otherwise, you wouldn't be able to do that. But it has no regulatory authority at all.
And I don't believe there's any financial, the town or the city doesn't have to empty up any money to be part of the byway.
Is it fair to say that it's focused on biking or tourism, or is that what it's focused on?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, you know, the byway is meant to celebrate the resources of the community through which it travels. And it can embrace everything from, you know, recreational amenities, to the cultural and historical aspects of the community, to the scenic qualities. So yeah, it's really designed to promote tourism. And a lot of the people in the Connecticut River byway program, for example, really have seen it as an economic development tool for their communities. For example, if you go to Bevill's Falls, they received a substantial grant to build a byway visitor center. And as Rennie said, a number of byways have received grant monies to do things like build visitor centers, improve bike paths. And I just got an email today from John Labarge, who administers the byway for the state of Vermont, and there are going to be another, there's going to be another round of transportation enhancement money, with some allocated specifically, potentially for byway improvements, related primarily to the road and traffic safety.
David, I'd ask you, when you go down Pantin Road and turn right onto Basin Harbor Road, obviously, you're very quickly out of Pantin and into Ferrisburg, down to Basin Harbor, back along the road. Let's say if, I can tell you, we have a ton of biking companies that come and use Vergennes, and I was explaining this to somebody earlier today, it's because it's flat down here.
Yeah, no kidding. High grade by you.
Anyway, what I'm curious about is about that section, would that be not accepted? Or what would make a byway not eligible?
Well, it's really what the community, what road the community wants to designate, or roads they want to designate as part of the byway. And it varies from community to community. I mean, obviously, here in Vergennes, you know, 22A and 7, although I guess 7 doesn't really, does 7 actually connect with Vergennes? So that's all Ferrisburg. In Vergennes, it's 22A. In the Mad River byway, they have Route 100 and Route 17 are designated. So it's really what roads you designated. So Basin Harbor Road would not be part of the byway per se as part of the route, but, you know, the byway, once it's through a community like Vergennes or Pantin, in a sense, the whole town is sort of a byway town and...
So as far as like subloops, it's not about the potential for subloops. They want to get from Montreal to New York City.
It's primary road, it's a primary road.
However, in Pantin's instance here, it isn't one route through Pantin, it's actually a loop.
Correct. And the reason for that is that they really, they really do sort of discourage the notion of dead ends.
Okay.
They really want either a, from one end to the other, i.e. from, you know, Canada, Massachusetts, or they want internal loops so that the byway comes back on itself. In this particular instance, that was what they had asked of me.
Oh, that's what I was curious about, a loop, if you will, that came from Bet, Vergennes, down Pantin Road, out to Basin Harbor, and then to Pantin Four Corners, and back. I mean, that is a loop, but it's, maybe the loop is too tight. It's not going from Burlington to the bridge.
Yeah, and I think the issue there particularly was, when I came to them, you know, to ask Pantin to be part of it, it would be kind of awkward, I think, as byway, you know, so it would come here and then it would end at the Addison Town Line. There's really no rationale for ending it there, other than it's a town line. And that's where they felt, you know, bringing that loop back created a very interesting, you know, option for byway travelers, particularly in light of what's gone on at the Champlain Bridge. And as you know, the state, New York's about to invest some serious money on the other side of the lake, on improvements to, I don't know the name of the road that the Champlain Bridge hits in New York's side.
Nine N? What, is it Nine N?
Is it Nine, no, it's not Nine N. The road, the road that comes from Nine N to the bridge, I can't remember, is it Airport Road? I can't remember what the name of that road is, but...
Oh, you get your phone?
Yeah, so they're going to...
Yeah, I should know, I drive that road all the time.
Yeah, so they're going to invest some money, and the state is going to be adding some enhancement to Chimney Point as well. And so the notion of the Byway Council of having it part of the byway was very exciting to them, and that's why they talked about the loop.
And there's a national byways website. And so people, when they're traveling through various states, go to that website and they can check out the byway. And it lists what kind of recreational opportunities there are, whether there's historic places to visit, and all those kinds of things. So it's really a promotional tool through that website.
Bridgeway.
Bridgeway.
I have another question.
Please.
You mentioned earlier, because this byway would probably entice more bicycles to come through that area, you know, there for traveling. One Sunday morning, I was out on the lake road, and there was a group of bicycles. It took us, we couldn't get through, they wouldn't let us through. There was like four or five right across, and there was probably about 20 of them.
No kidding.
There was a truck, a four-wheel truck, I won't say who he was, decided to go through, and they actually literally grabbed all the handles of his truck and the tailgate, and was just being pulled along.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
And it took us, of course, my friend, he was driving, he was going to follow him through, and I said, "No, you're not." You know, just stay back.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's because...
And that's what happened.
That's because that's been part of the Lake Champlain Bike Way. And so people are coming, as Mel was saying, that because it's so amenable for biking, you know, the bicycle traffic has been steadily increasing, regardless of whether this is a byway. I think it's more the Bike Way that encourages that kind of, you know, use. But with the byway designation, we may have more wherewithal to address that in some form or fashion. I don't know if we're ever going to solve it, but I think one of the things we've talked in Pantin about, because it has been a problem for us, big time, is actually talking to all the bicycle touring groups that operate in this neck of the woods, number one, and then, as I said, maybe doing some more signing, like share the road signs and, you know...
If they read it that way.
Yeah.
The other thing is, the council can have some discussion on how they would like the police department to drive the boat. Shelburne has made some changes, and they're getting everybody, but it's made a difference in their town, and we might need to do the same if we feel it's being abused. So I know we don't pick on the two-hour parking on Main Street, but, so.
With that, I'd ask for a motion to approve the support of this venture. Randy's hand went up first.
Second.
Randy will second it. Any other further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Phil Carey? David, will you need a letter?
Yeah.
I'd ask Mel to prepare a letter, if it needs to be accompanied with a copy of the minutes or whatever, to support that.
Perfect. And I will keep you appraised, I will report back to you in some form or fashion after I meet with the Byway Council, I'm in the Byway Committee for Lake Champlain, and give you an update on that process.
Very good.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time, folks.
Thank you for coming.
A pleasure.
Okay, we're going to, yeah, well, no, no, they're just going to follow. Okay. Application for license operator taxi cab. Actually, what we're doing here is, we need, we need to add an operator to that. Joan, you reported that police have reviewed this and...
Yes, those are his notes on there.
Okay.
The chief's notes.
Okay.
That he has nothing active on his driving record.
Okay.
Updated insurance certificate.
Okay.
Is this the taxi or no one?
No, it's the existing, it's adding a driver to the existing taxi.
We actually license every driver. We don't license a company.
Okay. Okay. So, based on that, I'd ask for a motion.
Make said motion.
Randy makes the motion. Saka?
Who are you licensing? Sorry.
Oh, everyone did not get a copy, because I didn't get it.
I'm sorry. Anthony Porter. That's the gentleman in the baseball cap. Okay? Ziggy got the motion out before Randy's, Randy's hand went up. So she was the saka, open for discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Phil Carey, congratulations. Okay. That was under new business. We're going to jump around a little bit here today, and hopefully my notes will keep me in track. All right, warrants. Warrants have gone around, I think everybody's signed them. Does anybody have any questions on the warrants?
One note, you'll notice that we entered the Ada Gania Fund, checked through the Knights of Columbus for $2,300 and some odd dollars, so that's, that's done. That's done. We'll audit that one more year.
Okay. Next item is approved minutes of the city council meeting for October 9, 2012.
I have two amendments I want to make, that were brought to my attention in the first paragraph where it says the city council agreed at their last meeting. It should say to meet one half hour early. I skipped the word "hour." And then, two paragraphs down from there, under Vergennes Opera House, the very last sentence that Billy Bettner had reported he was inconsistent with their budget, that Mayor Daniels advised he will invite them back in January to give a year-end report. Those were my two changes.
Other omissions, corrections, or errors? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Budget report. Mr. Mel.
The, I'll be real brief. If you look at the Public Works budget, you'll notice that there's a line item that's over by about $30,000, which is really the way that we will run the state's equipment loan fund through. You know, there's a line on there that basically pays the 25% down payment on a truck, and hopefully a Bobcat, if we get another loan in the spring. So the way that we're going to do this is, we just charge the entire purchase of that line item, and then when, hopefully, the traffic committee approves our 90, I think it's a $97,500 loan, when that money gets wired to Joan's account, then we'll do a journal entry and pull that expense away from there and book it to, to in essence, non-budget revenue, non-budget expense. So that line item, and if we don't get the loan, I'm not sure what we're going to do. We, actually, I do know, if we don't get the loan, we'll, we obviously will need to borrow from some other bank.
No, we're just, we're not going to take and spread any salt on the road, so we won't have to put that money.
Yeah, so that's the only, that's really the only kind of special comment that I had about the budget. The rest of it looks pretty good to me.
What percent are we looking at?
The easiest way is to just go to my wages, because my wages are accurately calculated. So if you just go to my wage...
$100,000?
Yeah. It actually makes it real easy, by having that there. Anyway, if you just take my wage, what is it, 34%?
Thirty.
Thirty, okay.
That's how you do it.
Okay, cool.
Any questions of Mel on the budget? If not, to committee reports. Mr. Bill, you want to just talk briefly about Los MacLour, how things went?
Yeah, I mean, everything came together well. I wanted to thank Pat and Chris from Public Works, they helped us load chairs and unload and bring them back and so on, they were great help. You know, the weather was cold, I think it snowed for a little bit. There weren't as many people there as I would have liked, I don't know what the museum was expecting, but I thought the displays were good, the speeches were good. You know, it went well considering the time of year, I guess. And, you know, it was a nice event.
And if we have cold winter this year and lots of snow, the governor said he's going to take the credit.
Yeah, right, that's right.
He already promised the snow areas, that he promised them a lot of cold weather and snow this year. So blame it on Governor Shumlin. Okay?
I saw Art at the Ferrisburg Fire Department Breakfast, he was really happy with the program and how it was handled and the number of people that visited over the weekend.
Yeah, there were always cars down there, both days, you know, I could see cars coming and going all weekend, so I think their attendance was pretty good.
For those that don't know, I don't know all the statistics, but it'd help me if I'm too far out of bounds, it was well over 20,000 people that visited the ship while it was on the four-month tour. So I mean, that's a lot of people. And they told some stories about how some kids from school went, visited in the afternoon, and they came back with parents at night. And people were bringing homemade goods and fresh vegetables out of the garden, you know, I mean, they brought food and everything. So it was quite pleasant, a very good educational effort, and that was what it was all about. Art did get an award for stuff that he has done from Cabot.
I will say that Art has mentioned to me that, you know, obviously, the McDonough's boats were built in Vergennes, and the war was in 1814. And so we have a year and a half, two years. They would love to partake and help do something in 1814, in 2014. What that's going to be, I guess, we don't know yet, but I think it's something that probably the discussion should start sooner than later, so we can get a jump on it.
That would be a wonderful event to host. I don't know if it could tie in somehow with French Heritage Day or that timeframe, it would sure as heck be...
Yeah, I don't know either, but I think that it'd be a good thing to start talking about this winter and just get some ideas together.
Well, it's, it's the Battle of Plattsburgh, is when the date, that would coincide perfectly, which would be September 11th, wasn't it?
Yeah, it is. Yep. I'm just thinking of the weather and try to make advantage of the visitors to the area and...
Well, it could be something that is ongoing for the summer, culminates in something that's special.
Would you mind kind of be involved with that, some way?
I'm happy to, you know...
Stir it along or keep it moving?
Yeah, sure.
Please.
I'd enjoy working on that with you.
Yeah, okay.
Great. Joe?
Yeah, Recreation Committee met last Friday, and it was kind of a wide-ranging discussion, but basically, three items that I wanted to bring to the council. First, we received a report from Mel on the finances, and he alluded to that a little bit in his, in the meeting beforehand, which I apologize, it was late for after some other issues I had to deal with. But basically, the finance report is, at the end of fiscal year 2011, the fund had $4,867, and then we added in the $44,710, that was the adjustment, that was approved by the voters last town meeting day. So at the beginning of this fiscal year, we had a little over $49,000, about $49,500, of which, about $40,000, a little over $40,000 were spent primarily on the basketball court refinishing. So at this point, we have about a little over $9,000. So, at this point, we have about a little over nine thousand dollars, which to, uh, for the committee to direct the council in, in spending. Um, second part of the conversation, Tara Brooks from the Partnership was also a member of the committee, has developed an online survey that she would like the public to have access to. She would hope to have that done by the first of November. And that would have two purposes. First of all, to understand sort of why people visit the city's recreation facilities. And second, um, kind of what the public would like to see in terms of not only recreation facilities, new uses, but also continued uses of, new facilities, but also uses of the current facilities. So, we'll have more on that.
What would be nice there is who is willing to get involved. Cause it's about, if you're gonna make this work, it's gonna take bodies and not just a few can make it happen. So, I don't know how you do that in a survey, but...
I think that the cert, yeah, and that's, and I, I think that's great. I think, you know, the kind of point of this is, you know, a starting point to kind of establish some priorities. And then the third, uh, the third kind of emphasis was what the committee would like to have as a priority, at least through the winter. And I think my consensus are, at least at this point, a toddler park or toddler playground is probably our top priority. So, by spring, uh, uh, we hope to have some plans, uh, maybe a site and some plans, uh, for the council to consider.
Good. Thank you, Joe. Lots of work there. Ziggy, anything?
No, but I think what we just did with the town of Penn is trying to get everybody to work together is a good step that we just did. To work with them.
No doubt there. That's for sure. Alright, nothing else? Uh, we'll go to Mr. Randy. Anything?
Uh, no, I've failed to contact Dennis Lambert about snow shoveling. Um, I did partake in the haunted warehouse this weekend. I'll let you elaborate on that.
Mm-hmm, okay. Anything else?
Nothing else.
Okay. I wanna thank all those that supported the haunted factory this weekend by attending. And a special thanks to those that actually put the show on. Um, we put in, put through roughly four-hundred-and-eighty-two people, um, and managed to make little kids cry and, uh, probably big kids cry and, I should say, adults cry.
They definitely can scream.
Or cuss or scream. Yeah, there was a lot of screaming, especially at the night show. It was, uh, really good. A special thanks to two of our citizens. I hate to single them out, but I'm going to. Uh, Ken and Diane Richards, they have poured their heart and soul into it, along with many others. But, uh, Ken and Diane have been going at it for almost three weeks, almost every night of the week, uh, weekends, uh, long hours. Uh, it, it's just, it's just been a massive amount. It took, like I said, three weeks to put it up and it took less than seven hours to take it down. So, and I think we had actually our first kind of a Broadway presentation. Uh, Cheryl did a fantastic job with her crew. Uh, everything really, uh, everybody was, had a, a real good time. So, thanks for everything that was done. May I? Yes, sir.
I, I think we would be remiss, those of us who participated a little bit in it too. Um, you, you recognize the, the couple, you know, who's done a lot of stuff, but there's no doubt in my mind that you are the kingpin of this operation. Um, just in terms of keeping it going and providing the energy and stuff like that. And I think that everybody should, uh, I recognized that last year and this year too. Very clearly, your role is very important.
Thank you, here.
And that's a perfect...
This, this is, this is my... This, this was my wife's idea and, uh, she claims it's gonna continue. So, I have accepted it as a task for next, next year, uh, just in a different capacity. But, uh, we will be, uh, I don't know how we're gonna operate because we'll be looking for, uh, the city's support to be able to use their name as a city function. Out of the fundings that have come in, um, there's some people that we owe some payback for expenses. And the committee has already talked about it and there's, there's a few donations that we wanna give out. The, the names haven't been sorted out yet, but most likely it'll be nonprofits, uh, state, local. Uh, and then the balance of the funds will go back to the city for kind of a way to tap some funds if we need. So, this year, some people had to take money out of their own pocket or took money out of their own pocket, didn't go to the city, so that we could, uh, buy a few things that we needed. And so, we, we'd like to get a reserve and that money is actually going to be, we recommend that it goes towards recreation. So, moving right along, um, voting, November sixth?
Yes, we do.
And Joan fill us in on times, polls, and information about absentee ballots or anything else you wanna share.
Okay. Election Day is Tuesday, November sixth. The polls in Virgins are open from nine in the morning until seven P.M. October thirty-first is the deadline to get on the city checklist. If anyone is not on it yet, they need to apply by October thirty-first, which is Halloween on a Wednesday, at five P.M. Our offices will be open till five. Statewide, all offices will be open till five. And, um, if you're not able to get to the polls on Election Day or you wanna vote early, you can. Um, you can do it by just giving us a call at City Hall. We'll mail you a ballot. You can stop in and pick up a ballot or you can stop in and vote at my office while you're there. Right now, every day from eight to four-thirty, um, you can pick them up, take them home, vote on them, mail them back to us, drop them off at my office before Election Day, or bring them to the poll on Election Day. But other than that, you, you can apply for an absentee ballot right up to the day before the election. That day at four-thirty, which is basically at that point, the voter himself needs to come in and pick it up. Cause if they, we have mailed them and they've gotten them on Election Day, voted them and had someone in their family drop them off that night. But you're relying on a lot to make sure that the postman's gonna get that ballot there to you for Election Day. So, we encourage to vote absentee. You don't need any reason other than it makes your life easier and you wanna make sure you get it done. So, you can, you're welcome to vote absentee or come to the polls.
Thank you, Joan. Um, every vote, as everyone in this room knows, every vote counts. From early and often, okay? So, and I say this to the people that are watching TV, please, please exercise your right. There's a lot of stuff going on and I'm not gonna say who to vote for. You vote your choice, but exercise that vote. Because if you don't, we don't listen to complaints. I wanna hear it. Okay, uh, public comment. Shannon, would you like to...
Whoops, I forgot my committee.
I'm sorry. No, I'm, whoops, I'm jumping along. Are you still here? Ready?
Go ahead.
Ready? You got some stuff to offer here?
Uh, no, not at the moment. I met with Mel this week just to kind of catch up on what the council, uh, discussed and so on, uh, at the last meeting. And there isn't a need at this moment for the committee to do anything. It's more council-related action first before we can do anything more.
And we have those as agenda items that will be taken up shortly. Thank you.
Peter, sorry about that.
Yes.
Have I finally done something on the Energy Committee?
Did you find that card I left you?
Yeah, I saw that card.
I saw this week or last week.
There were the two events.
You said this week, that's alright.
There were the two events, um, that I attended, um, last week, week before. Um, one was a presentation by Sin Common about, um, solar panels. And because that was like a, a company presenting their point of view, I won't say too much about it now other than the fact that they have a program which seems to make, um, panels, uh, very, uh, solar panels very affordable, um, like almost no money out of pocket anyway. And, and it may be available other places too, but they were doing the presentation up in Ferrisburg, really well attended. There were like thirty-five or forty people there. And then the next night, I went over to Moncton and they had basically an energy fair there and they probably had twenty different vendors, of all sorts of vendors relating to energy savings of, of what, of any kind or other. Um, and I don't know whether I need permission from the council to try to do something like that in Virgins over the next couple of months, but I clearly would like to do it. And it's, it's basically having a space where the vendors would come in, they do all their own presentation, they set it up. There's no ownership, uh, there didn't seem to be any ownership from Moncton other than the fact that the Moncton Energy Committee set it up.
They provided the space?
They provided the, they got the space.
Yeah. Is this something that could be held, you think, down here or would we have to have bigger space?
How many more people live in Virgins than in Moncton?
Oh, I know. It's, it's hard telling.
Less in Virgins than Moncton, I would say.
Okay. Okay, this, actually, this might work because the space we were in was smaller than this. Um, I mean, you just set up around the edge and folks just wandering around.
You, as the chair of that committee, would just need to, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, uh, reserve the room with Joan. Pick a date and figure out how we wanna advertise it.
Okay.
Front porch forum, uh, the paper.
Sure.
You know, there's a whole magnitude of, uh, and the website, if you get some information, we'll put it on the website as well.
Okay.
Yeah, by all means.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Joan, anything for you? If not, Mel, you have anything you wanna report?
Well, I'm gonna just, uh, Peter, um, we, we talked about meeting on either the twenty-fifth or thirtieth and I'm not working on the twenty-fifth, so it's the thirtieth. You said you're gonna be off that day. So, Peter and I will spend some time on the personnel policy that day. The, uh, relative to the salary, uh, survey, I can tell you the last one that the league did, it, I don't have a date in November, but it was actually published in November. So, I'm gonna get in touch with Jessica and see if I can't get the C.D. cause I think they already have it. They just haven't, they, I think I can get that earlier than others, but don't tell anybody. Uh, the, uh, the only, and I still am waiting, I need to, I need to follow up on Springfield. I still don't have their FY thirteen budget, uh, but I'll, I'll get that. Mike and Bill, I, I do wanna get together at some point about this demographics, about the five communities, about gathering, uh, some information, you know, there's, there's a little bit of, uh, research that, that could be, could be helpful. So, that's all I'll report and I have some other items.
We'll hit you up in the, yeah. City manager's report. Okay, sorry about that, Shannon.
No problem.
And now, here's Shannon.
We're relating to something coming up on the agenda for appointment of planning commission member or members. We did a community outreach through the paper and through front porch forum, got, uh, a limited response. Uh, we interviewed a, a couple of people who were outstanding insofar as, uh, their approach to what we wanna do and their willingness to participate. As you stated earlier, you know, that's a very important thing. Um, and so, we'd actually like to recommend that instead of just filling one spot, that we fill two spots uh, and, and run with, with eight planning commission members at this time. Uh, the names are Tim Cook and Rebecca Duffy. And, uh, over the next year, year and a half, we've actually, e- even though we've, we've done all of the, the zoning rewrite, we, we've got a lot of exciting things that we wanna do, uh, insofar as looking at the policies that are outlined in the municipal plan and trying to figure out which ones we can actually do and, and make happen to improve the community.
Okay, very good. Uh, with that, if there's other public comment, we're gonna move right to, uh, old business and that's appointment of the planning commission. And I know Randy, Randy wants to make a motion.
I'll make said motion.
Those two individuals, right?
That's correct.
Do we have a saka?
I'll saka.
And we would as...
I don't know who got it first.
And just to clarify, we would assume that those terms would expire August one, two thousand thirteen.
Is that gonna fall with the cycle or do we need to make a one, one-year term in a... Or, or did you, when you had your discussion with it, did you say try it for a year?
We've always said one.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I don't think it's gonna matter, um, as far as the cycle goes. I, I think we'll be okay.
Okay. Uh, we, we could, we could change that in, in a year. So, this is gonna go till August one, two thousand thirteen, as you said. Okay? And, okay, as is, two thousand thirteen. Uh, Joe, um, any other, so the term will end August first, two thousand thirteen, Joe. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
So, we're having eight of them? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Eight.
Yes. When you find good bodies, you just take advantage of them.
Lock them up.
Lock them up. Just don't burn them out. Okay, so that's done. I have to look down at my other notes. Okay. That's after six B. Uh, appointment of lister?
Uh, Mike, at the last meeting, we talked about, uh, getting notice out there for people. We have one, one spot on the listers and I think Joan thought I was preparing the notice and I thought Joan was preparing the notice and so no notice got done until today. So, anyway, uh, we've...
But nobody noticed.
So, anyway, what we, uh, the notice, I think it must say November ninth, I think, Joan, right? Or you have a date on there now of November ninth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so instead of October nineteenth, we're at, we have posted a notice. So, Andy, I, I don't know if you had something in the newspaper before about the vacancy, but anyway, that, if you, if you did, that's been ex... Okay, that's extended. Oh, yeah. You know that there's, there was probably lots of people out there really contemplating, couldn't make up their mind by October nineteenth. So, now they have a little more time, uh, to, to make that decision. So, Will, we will definitely, uh, come back with a, uh, with a recommendation, at least the board, the other, the two. I'll, I, I have involved the other two members of the board of listers, Karen Quigley and, and Bill Pockets. We'll come back with a recommendation at your next regular meeting.
You know, if no one applies, we can just have the chief bring some people in and we can just try and convince.
I don't know if that's a good idea.
Maybe.
Okay, um, so at this point, we're bringing, correct me if I'm wrong, Mel. I'm gonna go to new business for a short while and discuss review, review of police station floor plan. Is that, is that the one, John?
I could quickly do my manager report, but I'll, I'll yield.
You.
Whatever you wanna do.
Yeah. Yeah, cause the other two items, we actually need to go into executive session on, which is police stations, site selection and city clerk's performance evaluation. So, uh, I'd like to go to, to review the police station, uh, floor plan.
Yeah, Randy, I don't know if it's you or me, but, but, you know, one of the, as Randy mentioned, there's, there are really, the committees, the committee of, of Ziggy, Randy and, and Randy, Chris Colette and George, they met a number of times. Uh, and, uh, obviously with the help of Chris Huston at, and Mike McLaughlin at Bread Loaf, uh, with a lot of input from, from George, some input from me, uh, relative to a floor plan. And I, we just really felt it was a time that this doesn't need to be held in committee. It's, it's time for this to get to the other, the other members of the city council and, and the public to, uh, to look at this, talk about it. Uh, I can tell you that the, uh, the re, the result, if you will, of this shows that, that our, uh, original idea of needing roughly an acre of land to accommodate this facility, that, that, uh, that, uh, original estimate, I think, is, is correct. I will tell you that, uh, probably, there probably has not been as, you know, this more recent discussion with the committee. George and I have had some discussion, but I can tell you that, uh, that relative to this plan that you see here, it is not at all, you know, a, uh, an absolute requirement that there be a, a five-bay garage or four-bay in cold storage. Uh, that building, uh, to George and I, it's not critical. You know, would it be, would it be nice to have a garage and have that there? Yeah, but it's not critical. Uh, I can tell you from a storage standpoint, you know, the tires get stored down at the, at the, uh... George, George, actually, everybody thinks that George, the police department only operates out of City Hall, but they actually have three facilities in Virgins. Uh, they operate out of City Hall. They actually have some space in the back of City Hall for storage. They also use the, uh, the old recycling building for some storage and they use the wastewater treatment plant for some storage. So, they have their, so George is used to having, uh, off-site storage and to me, he can continue to do that. Uh, and so, really, it's not necessarily, uh, absolutely required, uh, that this, that this garage be a part of the plan. It's not critical.
That could be part of the site plan and it could be added at a later date if necessary.
Could be. Yeah, yeah. So, uh, so anyway, that's that. I, I will tell you, I'm, I'm, I'm not necessarily pounding the table on this. I don't like fences. I, I just don't think that, uh, I know that lots of police barracks, you know, they have all of these gates and you got remote control devices that open... devices that open the gate and all that type of thing. You know, to me, I, I just think that, to me, some of these things, I understand why they have them, I, I just think personally, I think they're not welcoming, I, and you can always build fences some other day, but I, whatever you see on fencing here, my personal feeling is, is I wouldn't have it. I, we don't, again, we have a wastewater treatment plant, that we have other areas that, you know, if, if something needed to be towed to somewhere, they can, you know, I mean, we have other facili- facilities, so it's not absolutely critical that the, that this police station be fenced, in my, in my opinion.
I, I sit on the opposite side of the fence on that one, Bill, just to point that out.
All good, all good, Mike, very nice.
Because, I mean, I have helped, been on the construction panel for both New Haven and, and St. Albans Police, or State Police Barracks, and there, there are times that it's, it's good to put those cruisers behind locked doors, we know that if a mad tractor man decides to do his thing, there's not much you can do to stop that, but, wouldn't want to take and have to get in those cruisers first thing in the morning and find out the catalytic converters were gone either. That'd be a little embarrassing and slow down the response time, so, but I see the benefit of some fencing and some security, so. It's good to have different opinions.
That's right. But anyway, again, I can tell you, the garage, the fencing, they're not, none of them are table pounders for me, my, 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 my goal really is to, is have the Virgens Police Department have, have a far better facility, and it's, it's 2012, and we've, we've grown out of, out of the existing place, we've long overgrown out of this, so.
Generation ago, probably.
So anyway, the, you know, the, the larger goal here is really to make sure that we've got, you know, the right, the right facility for Virgens, and, and it's forward-thinking that it's gonna take care of us for a long time. Let me, let me tell you, as far as kind of capacity here, we currently have six full-time officers augmented by four special officers, and one of the things that, that the committee, you know, talked about a little bit was kind of looking ahead, and, you know, it is kind of a negative thing to say, you know, we're gonna need more police in the future, that's, to me, that's kind of a negative statement, boy, you certainly hope we don't need more police in the future, you, you would hope that that's not the case, but if we do, you know, the way that I, the way that I see that growth of the Virgens Police Department is, instead of having six full-time officers and four part-time officers, you have seven full-time officers and three part-timers, or eight and two, you still would, you still should be designing around a 10-person facility, and that's what, that's what this, you know, certainly sets forth to do, if you look at the patrol room and just count chairs, and look at the training room and you count that, and also, you know, the size of the facility, certain positions, it's really designed, it's really designed about our existing force, but, but it, it, in and of itself, has some, has some room for expansion, because it doesn't necessarily mean more bodies. So, one of the things, with that, obviously, you know, part of the thing, Mike, is, at the last meeting, we went into executive session to talk about, talk about the sites and to hold initial discussions with land, with landowners, I've done that, I, I would like to report back to the City Council in a brief executive session, because I think part of, part of the problem is, is that, is you almost need that information, and we need to, you know, get some information out to the, out to the public to be able to, to have additional discussion here. But I think most importantly, to me, this, and maybe Rennie, I'd appreciate if you could take this over, you know, at some point here, the committee, this is the committee's work, and, and yes, there's three members of the City Council that sat in that committee, but if there's four members, the people who are not on that committee feel that the committee was not going down the right path, if you will, speak up, the committee will go back and reexamine something, so I, I think that that's what I would like to do to, to really help the committee, I mean, does the, is the, I think, because I think the committee feels like its work, its work is, is kind of done at this point, at this point, unless directed otherwise.
Does, does everybody understand some of the, the verbiage on, on the layout, as to what, what, what things are?
Yeah.
You know, J U V, hold, everybody know what that is?
Which one?
Juvenile hold.
I have one about H I N T and-
Yeah, George, I mean, I, I know some of what these things are.
Right, George, I'm sorry.
Hard, hard interview, H I N T is hard interview room?
There's two rooms there, there's two hard interview rooms, basically the way the building is set up, it's set in the operational side, there's two pieces to the building, there's the operational side of the building, if you look at that door, just to the right of the salad port with an asterisk, see that?
Yeah.
If you draw that line right down, past the one-way, it says one-way on there, right down through the hard interview rooms, that section of the building, from the salad port down to the booking and over to the hard interview rooms, is all a secure area, so if somebody's brought in as a suspect or somebody in custody, they never can go beyond that portion of the building, and there's a number of conceited asterisks, those are all combination locks, you just don't go beyond that point unless you have a combination. The hard interview rooms are part of that, that part of the building, and what the hard interview rooms are for, if we have any suspects, that's where we talk to them, that's where we bring them into, those will be set up with laptops or laptop capabilities, where we can bring them in there, we can interview the people, we can get statements from the people, do whatever it is, they would be, they would be videotaped, the possibility or the possibility for videotaping would, would be there, so any type of statement that we take is also recorded, and they would come into the back of the building, into the hard interview room, and right back out again. That concept keeps any victims on this side of the building, victims or witnesses, away from anybody that's in there that may be a logical, a possible suspect, that's why we do it that way. And most police facilities, most police facilities are set up that way, because we try to keep, we want to make an atmosphere for, present an atmosphere to witness or victim as such that they do not feel as though they're being looked at, and somebody can find out who's, who's talking about, or who's giving us information. So like I say, that's the operational side of the building, the salad port, booking room cells, processing area, hard interview rooms, and then you'll see, from the back of the building forward, you'll see juvenile holding. This juvenile holding area is set up by federal regulation, juvenile holding facility has to be outside of eye shot or ear shot of any, any of this other area, and even though it is in the same general location, they would, they assured me, the folks at Breadloaf assured me, that they could prevent any conversation with juveniles from getting, going beyond the salad port or the booking room. So we wanted to keep that there, the armory is for the obvious, security of any weapons or any type of self-defense equipment, quartermaster storage for, for uniforms and equipment and boots or whatever else, and that's it, so that's the operational side of the building. If you go to the right, as you're looking at the floor plan, if you go to the right, you'll see the patrol room, you've got the patrol room, and just in front of that is the IT room where the server would be, you go further down, you see the mechanical room, what I've done is, I would like to switch the mechanical and sprinkler system room with the storage room, which is just off the salad port. If there's ever a situation where we have to do any work, major work to the mechanical or storage equipment in the building, I'd rather have them go through the garage rather than go through the main part of the building, that just makes good sense to me. So we would switch those two, they're virtually the same size room, you see a sergeant, detectives, and chief's office, you'll see a computer, the C in the hallway is, is computer in the janitor's closet, you'll see-
Not big enough. Janitor's closet's not big enough.
Not big enough, okay, we'll make that a little bit bigger.
Take it out of IT.
Take it out of chief's office.
We'll take it out of IT. Computers are getting smaller.
You've got the bench locker room, you've got a records room, the records room would be an area where we would store any type of criminal records or any other type of investigations, you have to meet the requirements for that, and we also would have to equip that with a dry chemical suppression system, can't have a sprinkler system in there. If you go back towards the back of the building again, you've got the women's locker room, you've got a fitness room, going to the right to the chief's office, you've got a lobby in the vestibule where you would walk in from the outside, this is, kind of keeps the cold air and the elements out from the lobby, you have a toilet facility, and then you go up to the intake dispatch, and some people may ask us, why do we need an intake dispatch area? Well, that's not necessarily just for dispatcher, we're gonna, at some point in time, if you ask me what's your next personnel need in the department, I would say an admin person, because right now, the flow of information, the flow of paperwork, the flow of administrative requirements is, is quite a bit. So, we, we need an area like that, and we also need an area that's set up for the dispatches, because at some point in the not-too-distant future, the State Police may pull the plug and say, it's time for you guys to start having your own dispatcher. Well, that's not the time to start figuring out where are you gonna put them, so I want, I figured that'd be a good time to put that in there, we still have our own dispatch capability, and I would like to put that equipment in there and have that set up for the future and for an admin person. You'll see the SI, that's the soft interview room, now what my proposal is, is to take that soft interview room and take a slice of the records room and put the soft interview room in there. Now, why do we have a soft interview room? That's a room for any victims or witnesses, where we can bring them in there, whether the person is a victim of domestic assault, or there is a sexual assault, or interviewing children or whatever else, we need a nice, comfortable, secure area where we can interview them, and based on what I figured for our records requirements, I can see us taking a slice off there without really being detrimental to the record storage. I would extend the evidence, uh, storage area, evidence processing, and I would keep the evidence processing area all intact, with the exception of taking the soft interview room and moving that down here. We have a storage room, and this storage room would be for chairs, tables, and whatever else that would go in there, out of the training room, and the training room would be set up for any type of academic training, it would also be used for self-defense training. If somebody else wanted to use that facility, if there's something else going on, I wouldn't have any problem with using that, because we can secure all these other rooms. However, this is something that is, is important to us, because we do a lot of training, the more you train, the better trained your officers are, the less problems we're gonna have from a liability standpoint, and we do a lot of in-house training. One of the nice things about our department is we've got people that are cross-trained, and rather than going down to the academy and paying for that training, we do our own training in this training room.
You'd, you'd use that to train like the explorers and so on as well?
Also be used for explorer meetings, and that explorer program is catching on, we're starting to move a little bit, we're getting equipment for the kids, and that's gonna be a nice addition for our department. So that's basically it, that's the department in a nutshell. This is not an extravagant floor plan, I've had a number of other chiefs of police, I was just at the Vermont Police Association meeting over Lake Maury this weekend, I met the Vermont Chiefs meeting, and I also went up to the BLCT fair, and I had a number of people take a look at this from large and small departments, and everybody liked the floor plan, everybody commented on it, and this is not an extravagant floor plan, this is exactly what our department needs. When I designed this, I designed this not only for our current needs, for the needs of the future, the last thing I'd like to see happen is have us, at some point in time down the road, say, go back to the taxpayers of Virgens and say, we need this, we need that, well, that's, that's not gonna float, there's not much fat in this building. Any questions?
And the intent is just, this is a single-floor building at this point?
Just a quick, as far as like, outside the building and additional needs, like for the site, is there anything that you could foresee?
No, I know there's a discussion as far as the security fence, the cold storage area and the cruisers, that's not a game breaker for me, this building is the game breaker, because right now, the way we're doing business is not safe and is no longer functional. We can't, we can't even interview somebody in our facility without fear of somebody else seeing them or hearing them, and that doesn't work. We try to encourage people to come forward, give us information, I think we've developed a reputation that we're very responsible, responsive to people's needs, and everybody worries about somebody else seeing them, well, there's always that opportunity, there's always that possibility, rather, but the fact of the matter is, bringing them into this room and having it set up the way it's set up, I think this will work well for us. And like I say, I'm not just thinking about 2012, I'm looking 50 years down the road, technology may change, but the requirements for the size of the building, I don't see them changing. Mayor, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
The numbers in the rooms are those like square feet.
Yes, they are.
That's correct.
You know, they're not perfect, but-
And, and they're not overly vague.
How many people can the patrol room accommodate, George?
Ten.
Is it just in the patrol room?
That's correct.
Well, if you have, I don't mean to be difficult here, but if you have a force, 10 people total in your force, and you've got three separate offices.
This, this is because- Right, so if you had three here and seven here, the workspace is really, you know, whatever way you want to do it, but they set it up with the idea of 10 patrol officers, but if there's a chief, detective, a sergeant, you could have seven patrol officers in there, that would work.
Well, you could theoretically expand the force to 13, 13 units.
That's correct. Now, the way I look at it is this, again, I, I actually wrote up a, a position paper talking about the scope of the Virgens Police Department versus the size of the building, and again, we talked about this, and I don't see, I can't see the Virgens Police Department getting any larger than 10 officers, 10 police officers. At some point in time, there's people who've asked me already about 24-hour coverage, well, that's quite a, that's quite an expense, and it's certainly nice to have in light of the way things are in today's day and age, but again, we want to make sure that we can accommodate that. Likewise, we're going to need somebody for admin assistance, it's just a matter of fact, I mean, we're, we're already almost to 2,000 calls for service this year, we're well over 150 arrests, I mean, we're setting a record this year for a number of arrests and the number of calls, and the more requirements the officers have, the less time they're on the road, and it's my job to keep these guys on the road, to give them the tools they need to be safe and execute their duties and to safeguard the community. So the more time they're out on the road, the less time they're in their office doing paperwork, and there is just a tremendous amount of administrative requirements in this business.
And I, and I know from my exposure to State Police, they, they gave them, the officers laptops and expected that they were gonna spend 97% of their time on the road, it does not work, they have to have some office time to, to get everything done, especially on the paperwork and things.
Does everybody understand, does everybody know that we have the mobile data computers in our, in our cruisers? That does make things a lot easier, because basically what that does is it gives me the capability to punch up information, if I go on a traffic stop, rather than asking for a license check or registration check, I can do that right in the cruiser, I can actually enter the information from the ticket, at some point in time, we'll see electronic ticketing, that's coming, but right now, we're still operating with the old paper tickets, so we can enter that information, but when it comes time to do paperwork, getting ready for court, we have to go into the office. Now, another thing we've done is we have a copy, we bought a copy last year, which has the capability for officers to go in and type out all their information, and then with a secure zip, they can send all the information, pictures, audio, and everything, right down via the internet to the State's Attorney's Office, and then at some point in time, later on down the road, we do have to provide some documentation, i.e. signed affidavits to the court, but we've cut down the matter of, the amount of copier paper that we use, just because we have the secure zip, it makes it a lot easier, it takes that, it takes away windshield time for officers to run down to the courthouse on a Monday morning arraignment when they arrest somebody on Sunday night or we watch somebody. Again, one of my objectives was to get officers out in the street, I want the officers to be seen, and that doesn't just mean they're out doing motor vehicle work, I want them doing foot patrols, I want them involved with the schools, and I think we're doing a pretty good job of that.
Yep. I think it's a, I think the floor plan makes sense, I know that, you know, there's some concern that I've heard about, you know, little things here and there, but I think that, you know, cutting it by 5% is not gonna make or break, you know, and I think you're good to look in the, in the long, the long term, you know, whether there's a little bit of growth in, in the department, whatever. One of the things I'm, that I think I want to do, or I think the Council and the department should do, is to make sure that when there are questions about cost and so on, that they can be answered, you know, satisfactorily to the, to the public, and I'm just, I'm kind of curious- And I'm just, I'm kinda curious, I mean, being a person that compares lots of things, I mean, is, for a 10-person or a 12-person department, and we're looking at about 6,000 square feet, so you're looking at 600 square feet per person, per member of the department. Is that a typical number relative to communities our size in the Northeast, for instance?
I spoke to the Northfield Chief of Police, I've spoke with certainly Tom Hanley, and this, this concept, and I don't want to claim ownership for this, the general concept of this building came from the way Middlebury built theirs. And it's worked well. Likewise, when I first started asking for opinions, I went to Sergeant Covey, I spoke with Chief Hanley, spoke with Sergeant Christopher, I spoke with a number of different people about this layout, and it works well. And if you look at the operational side of the building...
It makes a lot of sense to me, yeah.
Versus the administrative side, unfortunately, it's always, it's the same thing I have in a military organization, you have the operational side, but a much larger support side. And the way we have this set up, that's really the way it's gotta be laid out. You can't really think of it as officer per square foot. I guess some people do that, but that's kind of misleading because if you look at what we've got here, this is the support side, this is the operational side, and this is as essential as this here.
Yeah. But I'm thinking that, you know, there are communities and we all have the same questions that we have to answer.
Well, it's not always that's gonna go towards building a building if you wanna know why.
Bill, we could pretty easily gather that information. I think, I think it's a, it's really pretty easy.
Like how many square feet does a typical police station have relative to its town's population?
Right, okay.
I mean, just to get a sense as to are we in the north or are we an outlier somewhere?
Well, you know, it's funny, I was at, we can, I think we can do that, George, pretty easily. I'm just curious, I'm, as you know, I'm a numbers guy. But anyway, you know, when I went to town fair, I sat with the chairman of the town of Essex, the board of Sleckman, and she's also representative, and I think her last name is Myers, I feel bad that I can't remember her name. I really enjoyed talking to her. They're building a new police station in, for the town of Essex. They have 32 sworn officers, and the facility they're building is 32,000 square feet, okay? And it was just kinda like, their facility's 18,000 square feet for 32 sworn officers. So, it's like, isn't that funny that, and I didn't...
600 square feet, right? And that's the kind of thing that, it makes you feel, and you can tell people that we are in line with other communities in terms of the size and hopefully the dollar, the cost per square foot.
Yeah, so, I mean, we can, we can gather that. I think if somebody, 'cause I, 'cause you know, I think that some people that, you know, they're, they're, there's gonna be the public that they're not gonna see the inside of this thing. They're just thinking, 6,000 square feet, that's ridiculous, okay? Or like, how big is City Hall, you know? And you're, and we're really comparing apples and oranges. I mean, City Hall, you would never use that facility as some comparison to make some decis...
I wanna be able to sell this floor plan and not, you know, have to go back and cut, I wanna have the best plan we can possibly do that's the most cost-effective for the community.
When people understand that, or you give them a good reason, you give them all the reason behind it that makes it even more powerful for people to say, okay, go ahead, spend my tax dollars.
See, I can tell you one, one thing that we did, you know, George and I met with Breadloaf a couple of times, and I, and I think that, you know, Chris Huston and Mike really appreciated a meeting with us because I can, they had too many exterior doors, they had too many hallways, you know? And this, this layout, it's really efficient, you know? There's not, there's not much wasted space, there isn't any wasted space, but there's, you know, like, the other one had, you know, I'm gonna say hundreds of square feet of hallways. I mean, it's...
Which is a waste.
It's just ridiculous, you know? And I don't, and exterior doors are not only expensive, but, you know, they're expensive to maintain and all that type of thing, and so we've, we've, we've been working to try to get this thing to be, be very efficient and, and low maintenance, and we haven't even begun to talk about what the heck this thing would look like. So, we're trying to get, trying to get to the next step, and we can't really take the next step until, until the city council, you know, feels comfortable with this. And, and let me tell you, we, the target, you know, in my mind, is to have a march vote on this, and I, and I think that that's a realistic schedule, but we can't not move forward. I mean, we, we're, it's really, we, you're, you're gonna be adopting a warning at, towards the end of January, all right? It's almost November 1st, so from a city council standpoint, you've got three or four meetings here before you would be looking at a warning, all right? So, I think whatever else we can give you, you know, we're happy to do that for you, but I'm trying to keep on that, you know, and I know the committee never really laid out a schedule, but I certainly had it in my head.
Well, that would be a good thing to look at for the next meeting, is to put down a schedule and a timetable. So, you know, what has to happen every two weeks or whatever to, in the end of January so that we kind of can keep on that.
Yeah. You know, we've got some cost estimates, you know, and I think that, you know, as I, as I was trying to say, I mean, if, if the committee, if George and I and the committee, if they're, if we're heading down the wrong path, I mean, you gotta speak up, you know, because, you know, 'cause we're, we're, we're working on this under the understanding that this is, this is a well-thought-out floor plan and the size that we need.
Ziggy, you had something?
Yeah, I'd like to find out, Mel, if you could, is like, like in the town of Middlebury was used, how many taxpayers, roughly, find out figures, how many are in the town of Middlebury? What we have here, I don't even know how many taxpayers we have in Virginia's and...
Bill can tell you that off the top of his head.
And Faresburg, you know, just in the surrounding area.
I can tell you, we've got 2,200 properties and about 7,000 people and a grand list at $7 million, which is probably three times Virginia's.
Three and a half.
Three and a half.
Who's counting?
Well, how many, how many actual people, I'd like to know who is...
Population.
I can't tell you that one.
That's what I wanna know. I'd like to know that.
And how does that relate? I'm just trying to figure out.
I'm just trying to figure out down the road, I mean, the maintenance on this, we're gonna see how, how many people we have paying taxes and how we're gonna support this and everything, just so we're all gonna be okay on it.
Well, you know, I think that the city council does at some point need to talk about how are we gonna pay for this.
Sure.
Okay? And, and the, I can tell you, you know, George has looked into seeing if there's any, you know, free money kicking around there, and there really isn't any, any federal money for bricks and mortar. There's money out there for a generator. There's, there's, there are some little pockets of money that we could get, but there's not like some program out there that's building municipal police stations. It's not out there. So, you're looking at a, at a debt load here, and, you know, I, you know, we, you know, we, we hear, you know, some of the numbers, you add them up, we don't have a budget yet. Is it 2 million, is it 2.1, is it 1.9? We aren't there, we're not quite there yet to be able to say where it is. And, you know, if we're looking at a 20-year bond, you know, if you had, if it was $2 million that we're looking for debt, it's 20 years, the principal's $100,000 a year. If you have a bond with a 3%, if you, at 3% interest on 20,000, that's $60,000. So, you're talking about, just talking about bond and interest is, is $160,000. You're not talking about, you know, heat, electricity, these types of things. You know, I can tell you, a 6,000-square-foot building is gonna cost you about $2 a foot, per foot, per year for heat and electricity, all right? So, you can, you can begin to shape an operating budget here. Now, I can tell you, the real question is about how are we gonna pay for it, all right? Because if you're gonna do it with property taxes, the formula's simple. Every penny gains you, you know, 2,100, 221,200, that's the number, all right? And so, if you needed 100, if you needed $180,000 a year, all right, at 22, there's, there's the math. It's nine cents, that's what it is. Now, if you said, listen, let's use a portion of the water tower proceeds towards that debt, let's use none, let's use 50%, yeah, let's use all of it. Those are the decisions that the city council's gotta, gotta have a discussion with, 'cause obviously it makes a difference. 'Cause at the end of the day, I'm telling you, it's $180,000 a year, I can, I can see it, you know, it's, and this is without building a spreadsheet. That's what the number is.
Randy?
I don't know whether it's premature, but to make a motion relative to adopting this plan with a couple of changes, but as Mel said, I think we have to move along if we're gonna make the, the schedule, and, and if we make a decision about what we think the building ought to be, and it still could be subject to change, then it allows us to put other things in place to keep on moving. So, I mean, I know that some council members are asking for additional information. I don't know whether you feel uncomfortable about adopting a plan without getting that information, but I'm prepared to make a motion if the council seems comfortable in doing it.
Maybe a better language for the motion would be to authorize the committee to move forward with this plan, to maybe authorize this plan as the framework, rather than saying, this is our plan. I don't, I don't know that subtlety is necessary or not.
Peter, you wanted to jump in?
Yeah. I pose this in the form of a question. Is there a value in a step before going forward with a vote to publicize this in a way that folks get to see it ahead of time?
Absolutely.
And I don't know, but, but the other end of that is what does that do to any sort of timetable? And I, I don't, it's just, it's my, it's just my sense that if we vote here today and say, this is it, you know there are gonna be a bunch of people who wanted to input on it, possibly.
And we gotta be careful on how much input we allow to a certain degree?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because otherwise, we'll never get up, it's like that crash thing, we'll never get off ground zero. Joe was first, Randy's next.
Sure, and that's why, that's, that was the kind of rationale behind my statement. You know, I mean, you know, when it comes time to vote for the bond or whatever in March, then obviously there's gonna be a, you know, a finalized plan in place for people to look at. But at this point, you know, let's just use this as a framework and, and move forward.
Randy's up, Randy's next.
I, I think we should have an opportunity for public input, but we have to really be careful about that because unless this is out there with some explanation as to what these things mean and why they're there, it's gonna be misunderstood, and people are going to be negative about it, I think, if they don't understand what all of this means. So, yeah, I think we should do that, but somebody's gonna have to put together kind of a program so that people can understand what they're looking at and why it's there, because it will be misunderstood. I mean, look at amongst the council members, how much, you know, how many questions we have about those things.
Randy, what I can do, and I've seen this happen, when Middlebury was along the same path, they had a little bit more colorful diagram and actually a legend of what these things mean. And then if, for some reason, somebody came in and asked those questions, they could explain what these different abbreviations mean and why those, how those rooms are gonna be used.
Yeah, that'd be great. If you, if you had, you know, like a glossary showing what the rooms are, what the purpose is, how they're gonna be used and so on, that, that, you know, a layman can look at and say, okay, I get that. That's, that's would be huge, I think, in terms of selling it. And transparency's a good thing, you know, to the extent that you could do it.
You're cutting off people, people ahead of you, you will, you'll, everybody get a chance to speak, but Randy, go ahead.
The purpose of, the way I see this, getting permission or getting a favorable vote on this is, we can start associating cost. We can actually say, here, give us a price, so that we can actually come back and say, okay, this is what it is. This, on a building of this size, this footprint, not necessarily in this layout, I guess, or with the minor changes that George has recommended, then we can find out how much per square foot it is gonna go to build a building and site prep and all that stuff. If we don't have that soon, we're gonna be locked, we're gonna lose valuable time. I think, I think it's really important that we, we do that.
Joe, and then...
Oh, just a quick point, I was gonna make is that, you know, this is not in the public record. I mean, we're sitting here with a TV on looking at this plan, and anybody's obviously welcome to look at it, and all of us have, you know, all of us have copies of it, they can approach any of us to take a look at it, so as far as that goes, we, I don't think we need a motion to make it at least publicly available.
Oh, not, not to make it publicly?
Right, but if we, you know, we need to make a motion to ask the, the committee to consider this plan a working model and proceed. I'd certainly be willing to make that motion.
Billy, go ahead, Mark?
Well, the only thing I would offer is if, I think you've gotta look at the real estate portion of the project as, you know, keep it on track. I'd be happy to work with Mel and anyone else to try and, on the sideline, look at some, at least some financial options at various price points.
That's a good point.
So that in the next month, we could say, you know, depending on what you're looking at for a bond, you know, you could do three or four different options. So, at least we have an ideas of where that's going. Then you can discuss other financing revenue options, like the water tower fund or whatever.
Your thoughts on that, Mel?
Well, I, that sounds fine to me, and I, I think one of the things, yes, there's gonna be voters out there that, that wanna know about the size of the closet, I understand that, but I can tell you, I think that people in Virginia's wanna know where this thing is going and, and, or where it's not going, all right?
And that's gonna be discussed.
And I, yeah, and I think that that's both, I think that we, it is time to, to have the pub, get some public input because, you know, it's, you know, I can tell you, one, and we are gonna get into sites, but I can, I think I can say this that is so obvious. We own, we own a piece of land on New Haven Road that's, that's, we own, that we don't have to buy, and the other sites in our list, we're gonna have to buy, all right? And the city council's going to have to make some, make some decision on, on what it believes is the right direction for the community and defend it, all right? And there's going, whichever way you go, all right, it's just wonderful, you know, you're gonna make, half of people are gonna be mad that you, that you, that you bought a site, and then you got another half that are, that are...
Because of the location.
Yeah, so, so anyway, I think that, I think to me, it's location. This is really, to me, this is education. This is about educating the public about why, you know, why the Virginia's Police Department needs a building that's 6,076 square feet, all right? It's just, it's just the way it is, you know? We can complain about the cost per square foot, but that's just what it is. The site, however, you know, that's, that's, we really, you know, it's important that the public support the site. I almost think it's more important than, than the size of the room, is to make sure that people say, listen, you know, this is, this is, this is the right site for us, so that's what I look forward to, getting public input on that.
We will get into discussion about that when we go into executive session, hopefully we'll bring that right to our head. Bill, your question about square footage per officer, one of the things that you wanna try to remember here, that one area has specific functions, and so I don't know how you can equate that to square foot for officers because it's specifically two holding cells. You can't have one because you may have to separate two people. The juvenile thing, the, the arms room, the whole nine yards. So, there is specifics, and I don't know how you could...
Well, it's not apples to apples necessarily.
Right.
And I, and I understand that, yeah.
You could ask, yeah, how many people are on duty at once? And will you have the need, I mean, if I'm a citizen, I'm not saying these things aren't necessary, but if I'm looking at this as a citizen, I'm gonna ask, are you gonna have the need for two hard interview rooms and a juvenile holding room all at the same time? Can, you know, is that overbuilt? You know, can you, could you...
We gotta answer that question now.
Yeah, well, I mean, do you, do you need, do you need a building that can accommodate a police force of 13? Do you need three separate offices? I mean, these are the questions that, if I'm about building, that I'm gonna ask if I'm, if I'm a resident, and that I wouldn't mind getting at some point, maybe not tonight, if it's a public forum, I, I think those questions would be, would be asked and could be answered at some point, and I hope, I hope the schedule...
And one of the, one of the things is, Randy, are, yeah, sorry about that. Andy, it was George's point, is we wanna build for the future, not too far into the future, but build in the future so that if the growth is there, it costs outrageous amounts to retrofit or expand a building. And so, if you can put your footprint down and maybe, and maybe break this into phases and say, okay, we do everything on the operations end, and maybe we don't do finishing on some of the others with a one-year, two-year, three-year phase into, and figure out how, you know, phase it in rather than trying to accomplish it all at one time. So, like, it's the thing with the financial thing, you know, so it would be nice to build a building, get it done, and get it behind you, but sometimes money won't support it or...
I kinda like Joe's idea of the council giving some direction to the committee to say at least, without saying yes or no about this, to say, go ahead in your planning, use this in your planning phase. use this in your planning phase. It's going to be on the agenda at the next council meeting, and the council meeting after that, and anybody who has, from the public who has an interest can come to the meetings and talk about it."
What I'm going to pop as a question to both of you, okay, is, do you feel that that is valuable, valuable way to go at this point? Or do you have some other sort of an idea which way we should, because you're the one that's going to have to run with it, and you're the one that's going to have to, because you had some ideas, so...
I, I don't think that this is cast in stone right, right now, the way it is. I think that we could call it maybe a working plan for us to proceed with.
Yeah, right.
And because it is, because we're going to take public input. The public input might cause us to make some alterations to this. So, but we do need to have a working plan that we know that the council is behind at this point, given the information that you have, so that we can get things done.
So this stays in committee, Mel?
That's fine, yeah. I think the committee, I think the committee's been very, I mean, I only went to the last two or three meetings, but I think the committee, it's helpful, really. Can I, can I tell you, one of the things that, that I think that we all learn at the committee level, is the need to edu, is the need for, to be able to educate people, people, you know?
The way that...
Go ahead.
The way that this is going to pass by the voters is that if we explain to them the need, and explain it as a need and not a want, you know, "We need to have a new police station. There's certain things that we have to have in this police station." And if we go to the public and explain these things in thorough, with thorough detail, that this should pass a bond vote.
Also, they need to know, they, we have to explain to them how we could afford this. They're going to definitely ask that question, so we've got to get that information through.
There will definitely be a financial impact, there's no question about that.
That's right.
One of the things that, if the chief has got any sort of an idea that he's going to go after a generator, it should be housed in a building separate from, so that storage shed, that would be where you'd want to have space to have a, house a generator.
Middlebury has, Middlebury actually has one outside, outside the building. Now, you'd know better than I, Mayor, well, you'd know that stuff, but regardless of where it is, as long as they have a generator to run that building, and, and I'll tell you something. If you look at all the operational needs of that building, the generator has got to function at all times, under all circumstances, and I can't have the lobby dark, or the toilets not flushing, or the air conditioning or the heating. That generator should be able to run the whole facility all at one time.
I agree with you.
Because in a national, if there's a natural disaster, or there's a crisis situation in Virgin's, nothing to take away from my firefighter brethren here, but the two of us, the two groups are going to be working together, this may be an emergency operational center. And that's where I would like to have people set up. You know, if the city council or the city manager needed to work out of an operational area, he would have a facility there to do that.
The only thing I haven't seen this plan, George, is an office for the next mayor.
I'll tell you what, Mayor, we'll, we'll find some...
I don't think the dispatcher shows up on the, for the first day.
Well, I am going to retire sometime, so I may be...
There you go.
Retire, Mayor.
And I will, I will tell you this, folks, I mean, my fear is that we don't build the building the right way, and the last thing I want to do is see us come out with half a building. The building has got to be up and running and do business, because if you, if you look at just the records room, our records storage right now and records maintenance is abysmal. I hope the hell we never have anybody come in and take a look at it. I don't even know where some of our records are, and I've been here three years.
Careful.
I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you that I have some real concerns, and the way this building is laid out, it takes care of those concerns.
The day job, when we built New Haven, we didn't, we were about 25% short on fundings. They cut space out of the building. And I, and I try to tell people, "That's the wrong thing to do. Wait till you get the money to do what you need to do, because you're starting behind the eight ball." And what they do, they did a similar thing up to, but not as bad, up to St. Albans. And what we do, after, all of a sudden, somebody came up with some funding, and we retrofitted the building to, for what they wanted in their first place. So, okay, we're going to go with a motion of some sort?
Yes.
Go for it.
I make a motion that we adopt this plan as the working plan for us to proceed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Rennie, and second by Randy. And open it up for discussion, comments? Hearing none. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Good job, committee. Good job, everyone. Good, good discussion. Yes, there's tons of unanswered questions. I'm sure that everybody's going to get drilled, once they have the TVs show us this. Make sure you have your, maybe we can reduce this on a card, two by, two by three?
Better buy a magazine glass and go with it.
Or maybe we can create an app. Ready?
As a follow-up to that, maybe we should say that we're going to have a public, a public forum on the police station plan sometime in November, and, and try and put something together. I don't know what that date would be, but I think the public, we should have a public forum relatively soon, so that, I mean, that's going to give us a little bit of testing where the wind is about the, the police station and, and the kinds of things that people want to know about it. So...
Well, I think, Randy, I think that's, that's a good, good idea, and I would look forward to that. I think that if we can commit to, we have two meetings scheduled in November, if the first meeting in November is really taking care of all of the business, if you will, for the month, okay, normal type business, and dedicate, you know, I, we'll need to pay some bills at the second meeting, but let's say that that's all we do, all right, and dedicate the first hour, or hour-long people want to talk about it at the second meeting in November, I think that that would be fine. And I think that...
Are we going to be able to get any print, necessary print changes that the chief is recommending?
Yeah, yeah.
Done in time, so that we can get that available to the council member?
They're hungry right now.
Yeah, we can do it, yeah.
Yeah, I realize they're hungry, and at some point, this may come at a cost. We haven't had to pay yet.
No, I know. Listen, Mike McLaughlin, he says we're their neighbor, so, he's, Mike is being neighborly, so.
We got that in writing?
First one, it's free.
Tell him I got a few bottles of Virgin's wine, he'd be more than happy to share with me.
I'll put that on the table.
So, is that, is that a plan?
It is a plan.
Second meeting in November.
Second?
Meeting in November.
That date is off?
Twenty-seventh.
I was going to say twenty-seven, thirteen, twenty-seven, that's what it is for November.
That's, that's after Thanksgiving, right?
Yeah.
May I make a suggestion that we hold this, hold this meeting at the Opera House on that, on that date? Just anticipating.
I don't, I don't think we'll have that much of a turn up, but...
Yeah. I can tell, I, you know, nothing against the Opera, but I can tell you, this place videos very, very well.
And you can hear it much better.
It really does, and I think, I think we're fine. And I know, and I know, and I know, I'm going to stick my neck out and say, "Yeah, you can give me the 'I told you so,' but I, I think that we're fine."
Chris, you're going to try to heat up, because Mark's got a coat on.
My hands are so cold, I'm trying to hold on.
Got to crank up the volume on these speakers, maybe they'll start putting out some heat. Okay, so that is a plan, everybody. The 27th of November, we will hold a public hearing, so that will have to be advertised. We will take and have an updated print. If we can have the updated print to the council by the next meeting, that would, I don't know, I'm not trying to be pushy, if that's possible.
I'm not doing it. I mean, it's a matter of pushing somebody else, so, yeah, we'll, we'll see what we can do. Let me tell you, they're, they're, you know, Bedlow, you know, they were, seriously, they're, they're, they're here to help. And, you know, I get an email saying, you know, I, I end up having to say, you know, "Chris, sit tight, you know, hold on to this, hold on, Mike. The city council needs, needs to take a look at that." So, you know, they'll be waiting for my email in the morning, you know, they'll, they'll turn this stuff around. It's amazing how quickly, you know, amazing, amazing they can turn this stuff around.
What I would hope is, because if we can do that, and if we have permission to use that document on the website, we could post it to the website. We may want to put some verbiage out.
It's a PDF, yeah.
So, we could do a little preliminary, just let everybody know that, what's happening. It'll be hard, a little bit hard to read, but you'll just have to increase...
And actually, you know, this, this thing is, I, they've sent, I have it on a PDF on my, on my screen, it's fine, you know, it's, you can, you can read it.
So, ready?
Yeah, it's a minor distinction, but if the meeting that we have in November could be called a public forum, as opposed to a public hearing, because hearing kind of makes it feel like it's a formal legal requirement, and this is really a forum to get people's input.
Okay, right.
By all means, don't...
It's an informational meeting, yeah.
Yep. Well, we'll make sure the verbiage goes out. Then, if it's a forum, it doesn't have to be warranted.
Well, it's more, it's your meeting, it's your own meeting, but it's not, as Rennie said, it's not like a, you know, I will tell you, and I'll lay out the schedule, is, you know, if we, if there is going to be a bond vote in March, there's a statute that's a little different than the normal election statute about required information meetings when they're there. So this, this meeting is really an informal information meeting, it's not the formal. It's to gather some input, some initial education, and it'll be a, you know, take that information, and we'll, it'll be, we'll be back in, in January or February with a real informational meeting.
Okay, good deal. Any other discussion that we need to have on this? If not, we're going to put it aside, and let's see where we are in life. Mel, so Andrew's report.
Yeah, I'm going to be real quick. Peter brought up the license plate reader, he had four questions, I gave that to him.
And can we have a quick response, so we all know?
Well, I can tell you that, you know, the number of, as I mentioned before, it reads all plates, but anyway, we, we can't gather this information from our unit, it actually has to come from the Fusion Center, but anyway, it read, it read 228 plates during that day. The other information that I gave Peter, Peter, he wondered about where it's stored, and, and it's really at the Fusion Center, right, George?
It's all in here, the information.
It's stored for five years, for four years, I'm sorry, and he wondered about who has access, and that information's in there, and, and you can, there's a, there's, we didn't get it, George, yet, but there, if some, somebody, there's a form that you can fill out. I mean, obviously, we don't use it for that, we're just using it for the purposes that we have, but as far as the information, it's housed by the state of Vermont at the Fusion Center, and if somebody wanted to request information, even George, if George needed to request information, he would have to fill out an application form, and that would be either approved or denied. So anyway, that's all in there.
Okay, same.
And I will tell you, is that this thing will read 3,600 plates per minute, which I was doing a bunch of math about, about how fast, how fast cars can go, and this thing can still catch a plate, 3,600.
Does it get revenue per user?
Thirty-six hundred plates per minute.
It is in the way.
So, there's a physics, there's a physics question right there. Sprinkler system, almost done at City Hall. You'll notice that the connection pipe is out, is outside. The fire department actually can connect to that and energize the system, but it's not, it's not done yet. But I can tell you, they're real close. We're finally going to make it.
That could affect our insurance.
You know, Zig, it doesn't affect our insurance. I, it doesn't. I remember saying that one time, that I, I can tell you, there was a time where it was 20%, 25%, and it does not automatically affect your insurance premium in our instance. However, there is some discretionary pricing that can go on at the VLCT passive, so we may get some benefit, if you will, in this special pricing, if you will, but it's, but it's not like I can say, it's saved as $840. I can't say that. The other thing, we've been using the work crew, Ed Cole, who works for the state of Vermont, I think I may have mentioned this today before, about the people that have to do community service, it's out of Rutland, and we actually had them working here on LF Betten's property on Sunday, clearing out below the falls. They have also built some docks for us that I think we just need to pick up, so I'm sorry, Mayor, that those, those didn't make the water this year, but they're, they're on their way. And it's funny, they, we bought all the materials for these docks, and they have a contract that they charge, you know, it's like $25 per, per person per day, or something like that. Well, anyway, I met with this, this Ed guy, and I guess, I didn't think I was really that, sounding all that thrifty, but anyway, they, they built these sections of docks, and Ed asked Jim, is like, is Mel going to be mad about us charging $100 to, to build these docks? And I'm thinking, "I'm cool, I'm good with it." So, anyway.
Keep building.
We'll take another ten.
Anyway, that's that, the audit, we, the auditors, we, they were only here two days last week. It went pretty smoothly, right, Joe? It actually went pretty, pretty well. And I can tell you that the number that I gave you when we were adopting the budget of a, of a projected fund balance for the general fund of $144,000 and some change, did not change a penny. That is, that is the number. You know, everything went fine, and we'll get you that, we'll get you the financial reports when they actually have them drafted. So, it was, it was good. You know, we're, we're doing a lot more of the work in-house. I'm real anxious to...
Get the bill.
Just get the bill, get the bill, you know, because I really think that we've, we've, we got it together here, much better now.
Was it funded $15,000?
Yes, it was $15,000, and part of the reason for the $15,000 is because this year, we were subject to a single audit. I still don't have any idea what the hell that means.
Really?
Well, it's because, because the senior housing, because, you know, it's a half a million dollar threshold, the 660,000 senior housing, the John Graham Shelter, $3,400,000, the sidewalk project, $400,000. Train station was actually federal pass-through money. The Homeland Security, I'll get back to you, I'll get back to you.
Yeah.
The, anything that's a Homeland Security grant, radio, is all that type of thing, that's pass-through money through the state of Vermont. So we had $1.2 million of federal money, Randy, passing through our accounts this past year, which, if you set aside any time that the city of Virgin's was building a wastewater treatment plant, because lots of times, that involves lots of federal money, $3, $4 million of federal money was, was what, so if you set that aside, I don't think there was ever a time where we had this much money going through, going through our accounts. So, it was, it was a lot, and most everything has, you know, there's only a couple of the grants that are still open a little bit. We had a COPS grant, you know, and the COPS grant's $130,000 grant, but obviously, it's spread over three years, so yeah, 1.2 million in, in federal dollars, so...
And some of those dollars we get to keep, though, don't we, when they get paid back?
Yes, exactly, that's exactly right. But don't salivate, yeah, Randy, because the, you know, the senior housing, that's, yeah, that is a sub-grant, and 50% of the $670,000 does come back, probably 50% of 660, there's $10,000 in admin, but, you know, it's not going to come here for quite a while, all right? But it is going to come, it will come back.
Not that we necessarily will have any money left over in any of these, but some of the grants allow the cost of the single audit to be paid out of the grant.
That is true. I will tell you that the only way that that, some of the community development, you have to have, you have to bid out the audit to be able to have that. And so, anyway, it's, it could be eligible.
Too many ropes.
Too, yeah. So, anyway, that's all I had, Mike.
I thought you were going to say the rest.
Well, the train station. No, no, let's, go ahead.
As I understand it, the train station will cross the tracks. September 27th, somewhere after 3:00 PM.
September?
Excuse me. No, October, October. I've been doing that right along. October 27th, somewhere after 3:00 PM, the last freight train goes through, she's up in the air, she's tender.
The foundation's almost done.
Yep. So, and the game plan is, at this point, I talked to the project manager yesterday, is, it's going to go across the track and be staged somewhere over on the side road, and stay there until sometime Monday morning, when they get the police cruisers and departments there to shut the road down while it's going across the road. So, and I didn't pinpoint a time, and I'll, I'll keep pushing to try to get answers. So, and I'll share that somehow with...
Just, just in case it tips off the tracks, right?
It looks pretty square.
Yeah, I looked at it, yeah, I know. Yeah, I looked at it, yeah, I know.
It's, it's, it's a sound building, and they're gonna, the first phase is to get it over in place and winterize the outside, so that it's, uh, it won't get any worse than what it already is, so. But the inside is pretty good shape considering the outside, so, but...
So, is that, it's gonna, it's up on the blocks?
It's jacked up now.
Okay.
And then, after that last train goes through, they're going to transport it across the tracks, and then they're gonna take it down, parallel the tracks, to the old Route 7. On the old Route 7, they're gonna go up there, that road is owned by Faresburg. Uh, and it's gonna stay somewhere on that road, don't know exactly where, until...
Is it on the way today on Monday?
And, and Monday, sometime early Monday morning, don't know the time yet, they're actually lining up police to shut that section of road down while they go across the road. They didn't wanna move it, uh, plan on moving it all the way over into the parking lot, um, on Saturday, cause they don't wanna try to move it once it gets dark. Once it gets dark, they're done moving.
So they're gonna move the parkway on Saturday to, just across from the spot, and sometime early Monday, they're gonna move it the rest of the way?
Yes, yes, I understand.
This is real, Andy, this is real, this is really gonna happen. You've been reporting on this how many years?
Yeah, really.
Eleven years, it's really gonna happen.
Special article, special article.
At one time, they said they were gonna actually put it on a railroad car and move it across.
Yeah, they did that, no, and it's, it's, it's too much effort to get it on a car and get it off a car, so... They, they, they're just, they're gonna get it, slide it across the tracks, get it onto their, their dolly, the transport dolly, and, uh, and then...
Creep it across.
Creep it across at about 1.4 miles per hour.
On, on, on Saturday, if they're moving around, what time would our photographer be advised to get there?
I would suggest that he gets there right about 3 o'clock.
On Saturday?
On Saturday.
And then he'll be moving around there?
Cause the last train is supposed to clear Virgens at 3:00 PM on Saturday.
And that's when they'll pick it up and move it?
And that, their crew is gonna be standing by, ready to move.
If the railway runs on time?
If, it's, it's, it's pretty good, it's been doing pretty good. And if I hear of any changes, I'll throw you an email, um, and I'll put an email out to council, cause this is, this is history. So, um...
I'll make a motion.
Alright, let's just double check, have we got everything we're supposed to do here, Mel?
Absolutely.
Now we need to go into executive session?
I made the motion that we go into executive session to discuss, uh, the police station site plan, the negotiations of the police site selection, and the city clerk's performance review.
I think Andy wants to challenge this.
I followed up, and it is perfectly mingled, remember?
Thank you, thank you.
You need a second?
You can go into it, but you don't have time.
Exactly.